Alright, good evening everyone and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board meeting of May 12th, 2022. We have three public hearings tonight which include 225 Pond Street, 100 Chestnut Street and 501 Pond Street. All of those will be discussed this evening. And then we have a list of different administrative matters and updates that we'll take care of at the end. So the first thing, just to get started here is the public hearing for 225 Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. And I think this is the first time we're going to be discussing this in Planning Board. So Peter, do you want to give us an overview?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you. So 225 Pond Street is, I would say locally known as McDonald's along Pond Street. And currently they have filed application which we opened at the last meeting and continued tonight. However, tonight we do have, I believe Eric from Boulder Engineering and he is going to present the application. What the application tonight is applying for is to change their their current single lane drive-through into a double lane drive-through. Excuse me if my terminology is not correct. And then also, that would be, actually that just got approved by the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals in relationship to the Alton bylaws, the permits all drive through. And so the ZBA did grant that. And so now the next step is to be in front of us here tonight regarding site plan review. And Eric will go through the site plan. But in addition to just the site plan review, also we're also going to have to discuss and talk about a requested special permit. And the requested special permit would cover the the order boards on each drive-through lane. And so those are requested to be digital. Visiting McDonald's, you know, not saying I often do, but I do. I think that is a trend that we see throughout New England and the country. And so the applicant here is just trying to make a change from the the, I'm going to say, static, static, static order signs to a more digital, a digital pre-order board, let's say. So I do not think I missed anything, but if I did, I apologize. But at this point, if I may, I'll turn the the application in or over to Boulder Engineering to run through the site plan and to explain what the proposed project is.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Peter. That was very thorough. You didn't leave me much to do. So for the record, Eric DeBruel with Boulder Engineering. I will share my screen if that's okay. Host to stable participant screen sharing. Do I have the ability to share a screen?
Oh, you can share your screen now.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Yeah, so as mentioned, McDonald's is proposing to improve their existing drive-through. This is just the existing conditions plan just to orient everyone to the site. Pond Street running horizontally across the bottom of the page. An existing full access driveway. If you're a customer, you could either use either driveway really, but if you're coming in to use the drive-through, you can enter in the driveway. It's all one-way circulation around this site today. We propose to keep that, but effectively you enter the drive-through lane. There are two menu boards there today. One is a pre-brows menu board. And then the second one where you make your order and then there's the speaker is in this line. From there, you'd pull up, there'd be two windows on the building today. You pay and then pick up your order and then exit the property. Sure, most of us are familiar with the McDonald's layout. I will bring up the proposed plan. Just add a little bit of color. This is what was submitted. And as Peter mentioned, we, we had filed, it's worth mentioning, we filed originally and then continued from the last meeting. We were working through a comment with the ZBA. We just thought it'd be appropriate to work through that and then resubmit plans. So this is a plan that's before you today. So that was the reason for the continuation. And effectively, we had a crosswalk located here in the previous plan with the ZBA and the comment was to move that crosswalk here. So that was what we were working through with the ZBA previous to this. But effectively, we are adding a second drive-through lane and order point onto the site. And what that does, as you can imagine, under the existing conditions, we only have one lane and one order point. You can tend to get, if someone's making a long order or they're not familiar with the menu, that taking in the order and making the order can take a very long time. What happens is you start to get stacking behind the order point, which is not where you want it. So by adding on the second order point, effectively add in a landscaped island, add in the second order point, so you have your speaker and then you have another pre-brows board. If someone's making a long order in either one of these positions, the next customer come in recognizes the cars or two stacking and they would just take the other lane. So effectively, what you get is a much more efficient order process. That helps McDonald's take the orders in more quickly. They can process the food more quickly. So you can effectively take your existing customer volume and just more effectively process it through the drive-through. Kind of eliminating the issue of the stacking behind the order points, which we see in some existing quick-service restaurants. And then what you see instead is that it'll stack where you want it inside the drive-through lane and then at the order points. So this, the only investment they're making here is strictly just to make the drive-through more efficient. So some of the things that happen by adding on the drive-through, we're going to reduce parking. We're going to reduce parking a little bit. That comes by way of removing about seven stalls on this perimeter. We're adding in a landscape island here. And we'll see on the landscape plan, we've added plantings in this area as well for some additional screening. We've removed several parking spaces that are against the building today. And then we've relocated some accessible stalls to this location, which we had a handful of discussions with the zoning board and some discussions with, at the staff level to come up with, with this location. So that is, that's the main improvements. Again, the order boards are digital format. So it's effectively very much like an iPhone. Has the ability to self-dim. So at night it'll dim. In the daytime, it'll get brighter. Similar with the speakers during the daytime. If there's a little bit heavier traffic on Pond Street, the speakers can, you know, at a certain level. And then at nighttime, if it's a little bit quieter, they'll self-adjust down volume-wise. Take a quick look at the landscape plan. So we've got about 53 new plantings. Yeah, we've got the new land, the new drive-through island with plantings and shrubs. Put some planting against the building. And then as well as planting some arborvitae along the edge here for some additional screening, where we've removed those parking spaces against the perimeter there. So at a high level, again, very basic improvements. The full intent is just to make the existing drive-through more efficient, to process their existing customers more effectively. We do have the site plan review before you. That special permit for those digital menu boards are just discussed. And again, approved by the ZBA earlier. I'm sorry, last week. And then we will have to go before the Conservation Commission. Just want to point that out. There is a resource area across the street, happens to have a 200-foot buffer to it. So that comes onto the site. So some of this reworking of the pavement and regrade triggers that filing with the conservation, which we intend to do once we get peer review comments back and work through the planning board process. So I think with that, I will conclude and turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
We missed.
Oh, my apologies, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. So at this time, I will just open it up for questions to the Planning Board. Obviously, obviously, it's the first time we've been seeing this. So please, anyone have questions? Please feel free to ask.
I do have a question, Tricia, if I could. I just want to clarify. I looked at the cover letter to the site plan review from April 4th and it had mentioned a discussion with the conservation agent that no permitting would be needed with ConCom. Can you just clarify, Eric, the change? Kind of what happened since April 4th that now it is needed? Just so we have a better understanding of what has changed.
Perfect. Yeah, so through the zoning board process, we, we weren't proposing any work in this area. So I'll just draw a line, make it clear. So this is the resource buffer. So any work on this side of that buffer would require going to the Conservation Commission. We weren't proposing any work on this side previous. Through the zoning board process, we relocated the accessible stalls from, from this side over here. So just touching that pavement in that resource areas is now where we need to go to the Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions that are related. So I'll ask them and maybe you can address them at the same time. I read an opinion from, I think it was the fire chief, relative to the relocation of some of these ordering points because of the stacking. And, and he, I believe he suggested that, that some of the, of the ordering points be moved. I assume this plan incorporates that. But in addition to that, my, my, the only concern, I think this makes a lot of sense in general, the way you explained it. The, the concern that the plan just gives me is not too much of the stacking for people that, that would take this lane or that lane to order. But the narrow, the narrow mouth that is between the, the, the right lane, the right ordering lane and the point where you can just go through, if you're not going to order, but you're going to park on the back. Once you start stacking a few cars, you know, it's going to be tough to pass through if you, if you get the mouse lower, Peter. No, at the inception of that lane, below, right there. If there's a car parked on the last diagonal spot and the cars are already stacking, first people are not going to be able to go on the back to park, but I worry about fire, fire apparatus trying to get through if there's an emergency. Has that been discussed with the fire department? If you could clarify?
Sure. That did not come up with the fire department. I'm just going to go back to the site plan. There we go. Oops, that's the landscape plan. Sorry, I'm just trying to get back to the site plan. There we go. So that was not discussed with the fire department. I think we are meeting, you have minimum aisle requirements for, for the town ordinance. We wouldn't anticipate cars, you know, stacking that far back. I'm not saying it couldn't happen. I think in a life, safety or emergency situation, I don't think cars would probably stay in, in the, in the, you know, the drive-through lane and block things. So I wouldn't anticipate that being an issue, but we do have the 18 feet there, which again is, does meet code. Fire department reviewed the plan and their only, like, as you mentioned, their only comment was that we're moving an order point from a little bit where my mouse is hovering down about 10 feet and adding a second one.
Okay, so is, is that, is that delineation of the, of the new drive-through lanes just paint or is there a curb?
So there would be a curb. This, this island would be fully curbed.
On the, on the outer side?
This side, we've, we proposed a curb so that we could add some landscaping in here.
Yeah, no, no, I mean on the lane. I'm driving.
Oh, no, yeah, let's just paint. Great.
Okay, so people can drive out if there's an emergency?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
And the, the whole parking lot is going to be repainted or striped or just this area?
I don't know about striping. If they did, it would just be in kind, just painting over the existing striping. What, what, what is proposed, the stripe that would go all the way around the drive-through lane, just to delineate that. And then some of the new striping at the ADA parking. And then there's some striping here where there's some existing what they call pull-forward signs and mobile order signs that are on site today. We just add some additional stripes there.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with this. My only comment would be to make sure that the fire department reviews this specific point and if they're okay with it, then I'm okay with it.
Is that something, Marcelo, that you would be looking for, like I said, the, the fire department to comment specifically on if they had in any issue? For instance, if there's five cars in each row, you're saying, is, are they still comfortable getting through?
Yeah, I, I don't know when the review is, but I, we just heard that the review had different configurations on this specific area before and things were changed. I don't know if the fire department saw it before or after the change.
I can, just to jump in real quick, this, this plan has been sent off for third-party review of a site plan. But Marcelo, I'm happy to follow up with the fire department concerning that question. And to see if I can get a comment and in the, in the email, just to clarify. And Eric, if, if you could provide the board with a, have you done a turning radius study to the site?
Yeah, we can, we have, usually we run a large, you know, they've got the large delivery trucks that run through, which are generally more difficult to get through the site than a fire truck. So we've run that, but we could certainly run a fire truck if.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be great if we can do that and show it to the fire chief. And I mean, if push comes to shove, just by losing, I guess, the last diagonal spot, you would, you would clear a little more of an entry point, but I, I will defer to, to, to the fire chief.
Okay. Marcelo, I'm happy to work with Eric on that. And Eric, if you could send over the, the turning radius delineation, I can, I can move that through the process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm actually looking at one with a fire truck. I don't know if it's the right fire truck and it looks like the previous configuration with the handicap spots on the right there, but those spot sizes don't change. So that's on the town website.
Yeah, I think that's the original plan.
Okay. So yeah, I would just, I'll check that it's the right fire truck and that, that it's the right plan.
Yeah, but the way that.
I think it works.
The original plan, the only thing that changed was some striping in some parking spots. So the geometry of where the curving is in these lanes, I don't think changed much from that. It's just literally just moving some striping over on the side. So again, we can, we can get that updated and current and over to Peter.
I believe there was maybe other comments from the police chief or fire chief, maybe looking for signs to help direct people, people out maybe onto Nickerson Road? Is that right? Instead of coming all the way around and coming out to 135. I know they wanted to make sure as much as possible that people don't turn left on 135. Is, are there, is there plans for signage to direct traffic in a certain way?
We, we're not proposing any, any additional or new signage. So I think, I think what they're saying was customers leaving the drive-through instead of taking this driveway out, directing them back around and then out to Nickerson. That was the intent of the comment from the police, I think.
Okay.
So we don't have plans to do that. I mean, I think there's an existing drive, driveway there. I'm not sure what the, why we would want, we would do that. I think they maybe also had concerns. we would want, we would do that. I think they maybe also had concerns with people taking a left turn out of the site. Maybe we could add, I think the intent of this driveway is for it to be right only. We could add a sign, you know, right turn only, which might help help with that. But again, I think it's a DOT road, so making adjustments to it or modifying it would be a little bit cumbersome for us.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe that was the gist of the comment, just about how to, I think they, maybe it was the police chief letter that said, hey, some people are going to try it anyway, even though they shouldn't and if we directed another way, but as as much as we can direct them to, you're only allowed to turn right in this situation. And I know that things went, there was a letter from the Architectural Access Board as well, and that seemed to they seemed to be satisfied with the with the location of the accessible parking and the walkway back and forth between there and the building.
That is correct, yeah.
That was, that was a big point in the discussion concerning the appeals. Was the location of the accessible parking spot. But no, I, Tricia, I agree with you that the police chief's comment is to to stop people from taking a left out onto, from the exit, from the frontage exit on Pond Street, to direct people back around to Nickerson and use that, use that Nickerson Road as a as a point to take a left turn.
So when does the third-party review happen, Peter?
This has been sent to the third-party review, so it's underway right now.
Okay, so we're just waiting, we're waiting for the result?
Yep, we're just waiting for the results. I held back on it until the Z B A was completed. And they ironed out where the accessible spots were going to be. Obviously, I don't want to send it off until everything is, at least ninety-five percent. So at this point, the plan has been sent off to third-party review, our third-party consultant, G C G. And it's under review, so if there's no more further comments, we do have plenty of time to hear this case. You know, I think we can continue this out to the next hearing. And then also, in the meantime, if there's no other comments. And I know we probably want to open up this up to the public, but the main things that I'm hearing are having a turning radius analyzed and reviewed by the fire department. And then having a right-hand sign, no right-hand sign, excuse me. No left-hand turning at the exit coming out of Pond Street. Just before, Tricia, I asked you to open up, I'll ask you to open up to the public. Does anybody have any comments on the digital boards and the digital ordering boards?
I mean, I do not, but I, but I am curious when the Concom hearing is and whether we might have some of their input prior to our next hearing.
We are not scheduled with the Conservation Figure, we'd go through and get feedback from peer review and through this process before we file.
And the reason I, the reason I ask is, you know, sometimes we make our decision contingent on their approval. And looking at section nine point four six and nine point three two in the bio laws. I wonder if we should attempt to, to work more congruent to their process in this, in this particular application. We can certainly revisit that once we have the the peer review documents, well, not the peer review, the
Third party.
Third-party review.
At the current, at the current time, the area of the new handicap accessible spaces is currently paved, is that right? It's not green space or?
Where we're proposing them now?
Yes.
Correct, it's all, it's just pavement.
It's just paved, so you're just changing the function of the paving?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we can see what the, what the board wants to do there. You know, Conservation Commission obviously will be looking at it from their point of view. But we will be waiting for the third-party review as well. As far as the, as far as the digital signs, I don't I don't have an issue with that. I appreciate the planting. The plantings along, the new plantings along the property line, I think there is just one residence, was residential property that's located there before, I think, some land that is owned by the condominiums. So, and it looks like it, it looks like those have been, that has been placed to, you know, in that location to buffer that, those screens as much as possible. Maybe we'd want to look at you know, what it is so that, so that in the wintertime, it isn't completely exposed, right, that there's something more solid there that is really protected all year round. But other than that consideration, I don't, I don't have an issue with them going to digital boards. And anyone else want to weigh in on that topic in particular, which is important for the special permit?
I mean, I, I don't, I do think it might be helpful to understand, I'm just looking at the bio law. No externally lit sign shall utilize translucent panels, letters, et cetera. Can we just get a clarification as to this particular external elimination, whether it's within the bio law or there's some kind of variance that's being saw here? Some sort of distinction from the bio law? That was not really clear to me from the application.
The externally lit sign enters typically found at the, on the frontage. And so that's the way I kind of read that. I think these signs are just a yes, they are, they're interior lit as a board, but but I believe after meeting with the building commissioner, that these would be permitted to do a special permit process, but I'm happy to get clarification for you and the board running up to the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think the board does need to interpret that as a, you know, as a board. I think we need to figure out. Let me, let me ask it this way. How visible are those signs? I'm assuming they're visible primarily to the, to the cars, right, as they pass through? How visible will those signs be to those passing by, you know, on Pond Street, riding on a, in the future, riding on a bike path or walking by? Are these signs that are meant to grab their attention or are they predominantly meant to grab the attention of the cars coming through?
That's a great question, and really, oftentimes when we go into different municipalities, these boards, they're not even considered signs because they're not intended to advertise, they're not intended to be seen from the road. And effectively, the pre-brows is ten square feet and yeah, it's only meant to be seen by the car in the window that you're sitting next to it. Same with the, the order point, you pull up to it. So a lot of times, these aren't really even considered signs, they're menu boards. But I guess in this instance, it was interpreted to be a sign, so that's the reason we filed the special permit. We originally weren't sure if it was going to be a variance, and I think we met with the zoning board. At some point, I think it was clarified that it was a special permit through the planning board.
Because of the signs specifically.
It's, yeah, it's
Yeah.
It's not sign per se, it's like, it's a menu board.
Menu board, yeah.
But I think that's
And I, I mean, my thought on that is it, it sounds like from everything you're presenting, that it's absolutely that, that it's meant to be visible for the cars coming through. I just wanted to make sure, and because we're not seeing the view from like the layperson's view from the street. I wanted to kind of understand that better. Do you have any visuals for us of how that would look, how those menu, digital menus would look from?
From the street?
The street level, is that possible?
No, it's not something we've prepared. I think
It's okay. I'm just curious if that's available to us, other than the description as is.
But Tricia, I think your point is good. I, I think they're protecting the neighbor from, from, from the nuisance of having something bright on the other side. If the planting definitely can do that, so I support that.
Yeah, I think if it can
Could be evergreens or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can I'm kind of looking on this drawing.
Yeah, right now we have arborvitae specs, so I mean, it'll stay, you know, it'll get planted at six feet, it'll grow very quickly. So it'll be a constant screen all year, all year round.
It would be nice maybe on the, on the, the next presentation to actually put the house. It is, it is just a, a single, as far as I know, one house and one residential property that's over there. But then we can really see if the, if the, if it's, if these are the right parking spaces to in which to provide that greenery, or, you know, should, or should the plantings really go, you know, you can almost fit more in that strip, you know, to, to block that, that light as much as possible. I think it said somewhere on there that you were able to reduce the amount of parking spaces, maybe you had too many. Is it important that you continue to maintain? I'm wondering if, you know, if, if needed, can we, can we trade more parking spaces for more greenery on that side? Or are you at the limit of what you need to have?
Yeah, I mean, it's always a good discussion about parking. McDonald's are definitely comfortable. We removed, let's see. Total, we removed, so the required number of parking is twenty, the existing was fifty-five, we removed eleven. So we've got eleven removed total so far. That's pretty close to being what they're comfortable with. I'm sure they would be open, you know, if there's this needed to expand a space or shift, you know, up or down, depending, once we get that on there, everyone comfortable. I'm sure they'd be okay with another, but.
Yeah, it's just kind of a thought about, and even the, you know, how both Kevin and Marcelo mentioned things about turning radiuses, especially with that the, the parking maybe space right up, right into the entry of the pass-by, right? So if, if it helps both situations, if it helps both situations to, to block the light to that residence and eases the curve a little bit more, eases potential congestion, then maybe it would be worth one or two more spaces, but but obviously parking is also important consideration too. But something to, something to look at, especially like I said, if you can locate that house. From the, you know, from the maps we already have, to get it in place, to understand that if those arborvitae are in the right location.
Sure.
And Eric, just clarifying question, are your hours still five AM to midnight type of hours there in that location? Seven days a week? And is the plan to have those signs kind of functional in this way through the whole open period?
I don't think they're, they're not proposing to change the hours. I don't off the top of my head know what, what the hours are. But they would intend to run, whatever the hours are, the drive-through would be open for all of those hours. Sometimes they reduce the dining room hours as it gets later into the night, but the intent would be to run the drive-through as, as it exists today.
Later, I know, would it go to one lane? So maybe the, the two that are closer to that abutting house would be shut off earlier?
Potentially. Ask that question, yeah.
Yeah, I think that is exploring a little bit. So that we have some containment of that light, light pollution, if you will. If we can avoid some of that, that's just not necessary.
Almost shifting, obviously shutting down the outside lane, say after seven thirty, eight o'clock at night. Is that something, Anna? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just grabbing my notes. I mean, yeah, I think, I, it sounds like Eric is going to look into it and get back to us as to kind of what they have in mind and I'm assuming there's some thought of, of the expected traffic and what times of night it's less and might go to one lane and less. Just to find a good compromise that we're not turning into a a visual in the community that's very kind of high-energy, that's not necessarily late at night.
I agree a hundred percent.
Are there any other questions from the board? Might as well open it up for public comment. Okay.
I just say also, if we're gonna, we're putting the house on there and lining up the those trees, it looks like there's some existing trees in that area, so maybe overlay them too and how they mix with the with the new trees. I'm not sure which property they are, which side of the line they are, but they look like older trees that should be saved and not overtaken by the new ones.
Okay, yeah, to look at what's there already and if, if they can be used in some way and maintained. Yeah, it's kind of hard to tell from aerials. I don't know how old this aerial is that I'm looking at.
Let's bring aerials, grab the screen clip off of Google. Again, like you said, I don't know if it's how current it is, but we're effectively just going to visualize, it might not be a hundred percent accurate, that I was drawing here. See if we can draw on generally where I think, so effectively we did something like this, and again, I'll add it to the plan so we can really see it next time, but we're essentially adding new green space, something like this. These mature existing trees are on the abutting property, so those would all stay. As well, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Then let me open it up to public comment. Peter, I will leave you in charge of that.
Yes, thank you. So Mark DeSoney, you do have your hand up, so please introduce yourself and give us your name and your address.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark DeSoney, forty-nine Hawthorne Road. And that aerial shot of that picture is not an original airshot of what there is, right? That you had just before I came on?
Are you talking this?
That's not a real shot, is it?
It's just a Google aerial that you can grab offline or on Google Earth.
Okay, so I'm not going to be using that as my question, because that's basically not, not the original, what's on the ground now. Like, I can tell, I can tell how it is, how it was looking, and the striping is not there going around from the the, the street to the order, to the, to the menu sign, but that's not all there now. Is it?
I could bring up the surveyed plan, which would be current.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like what I have on Google Earth there.
So this is the surveyed, this is what the survey company went out and surveyed within the past six months, so this is fairly current unless something's changed in the past six months, but does this help, help with your question?
It's, it's gone, but I, I would like to have you go back to you, to you, not to Google, but your design.
Oh, okay.
That you've been talking on. Yes. I know, I got about two, three questions about it. One is a comment saying you did move the handicap from the right or down to the left corner, yes or no?
From the right to the left, yes.
Thank you. That's for safety reasons, and you moved the crosswalk that was with those handicaps on the right side down to that left corner to make it a shorter distance and a more safer walk for pedestrians to get to the McDonald's building, which is was, should have been on the original, instead on your, on the original site plan where you had it on the right side, nearest to the entrance from Pond Street. So that's, that's, that's a compliment right there. Now, another one is the drive-through itself, can you bring me, can you zoom that in so I can see the top? Where you, where the mouse is up more, please? Okay, yes. A curve. With, this is a one twenty-five Q length and just at the top of the, the first original drive-through with the long lines connected to a dot. Black dot by five feet. Yeah, in that area. Now, that along with the, with the extra, with the one you want to put in, it says six. Is it, is there going to be a slight merge going around that, that corner itself? Before the original order line to this new one, but it has the dotted line in between?
So this dotted line that you're talking about, this, this not intended to be striping, this is just to show the measurement between the So this dotted line that you're talking about, this, this not intended to be striping, this is just to show the measurement between the pickup, uh, the pay window and how far it is to the, to the order point. Um, that's just the McDonald's requirement that we show that so that they know exactly how far is between there and there, so that won't be striped. Um, there is a merge point, if, are you talking if?
Yeah, I'm talking right there, at that bend up to the, um, twenty-five Q length.
So yeah, so the intent, if this was a car here, and then there was a car and the other order point here, you're sa- you're saying this, this merging?
Yes. That seems like that, if, um, if two cars go at the same time, then one's gonna have, have to slow down to let the inside car go first.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you wanna talk to that a little bit?
Yes, I wanna talk about that because people are, says not patient at times.
Yeah, so the way McDonald's, the way these order points happen is when you're making your order, they'll read it back to you. Um, so they'll never release two orders at the same time. So once one order is finished, they'll say, they'll read you back the order, what your cost, you know, the price of the, what the price is, and they'll ask you to pull forward. Once they see them pulling forward, then they'll release the other one, and they've got cameras to see and, and manage that. And, and again, just remember, they're, they're at a stop right now. So there's, it's not, they're not racing to this point.
I know, I know, not racing, racing, but this is in case one, the, the car, the, the passenger who's ordering does not pay full, full attention and says, okay, this is what the cost is, he said, yeah, right, here I come, and then he starts from the outside before the person inside starts, he doesn't pay attention for that, that, that's, that's a, that's a car, that's an operator driver sort of thing. Okay, now, on the other side, coming down to the other side of the, of the, of the building, McDonald's building itself, where it says, uh, a, um, exit, thirty-two, seven exit?
Which?
Up and down, it goes up and down, but it says plus before the thank you line, yeah, that.
Yeah, this is a dimension between the windows, thirty-nine point two feet between the windows.
Okay. Is with two order window, with two order spots, is McDonald's thinking upon the third window in to control money? Money change hands and orders handed out?
Um, not at this time. Right now, there's two windows. Sometimes they'll contemplate putting a third window, but that would just be to pull a car forward to hand a, hand a meal through, but that's not on this plan. So no changes to the building right now.
No changes to that, okay, because if they're gonna get more traffic, two windows at the same time, come, it's not at the same, but to come around to understand that there's gotta be more customers, but at two different points. Okay, that, that need here or there for that question, and coming, coming down to the, uh, entrance and exit path.
Uh, Mark, I'm gonna ask you for this to be your, your last question, given that we have two other public hearings, okay?
Is there anybody else behind me raising hands?
No, but two public hearings are behind you, so we have, we have many other things to do tonight. So if you, and, and we won't be voting on this tonight, it'll be continued, so if you can get in one more question, that would be great.
Okay, let me take a, let me take a relaxed breath here. Okay, the entrance and exit was originally put there, because I, I, I used to be a, a customer years ago, that there used to be a exit in from Pond Street. They left a, let's see, a right turn in and then going around to the exit right turn out. That was the original direction they had on the side, and they had signs saying right turns only. Now, my other, my other thing to that, and this is gonna be it, is why would you wanna have drivers, if they wanna make a left turn? I may have answered my own question on this, I'm gonna ask anyways, why would they go around all the way back to Nicholson Road where they could do a quick U-turn at the exit where it says thank you? And then you, their car back in this Nicholson Road exit right there?
So you're asking why customers wouldn't make a, a U-turn out of the drive-through?
Yes.
Do this?
Yes.
Uh, I think just the, the nature of the one-way, um, and then the width and the angles of the, the spaces would keep customers from trying to do that. I don't think that happens at the site, um.
So you're saying there's gotta be a one-way sign somewhere on the site saying at the, at the, the thank you, no right turn there?
Nope, the property today is one-way circulation, so that's just inherent to how this property functions, so I think just being in this lane facing that way, you're, you're just gonna keep, keep moving forward, and then whether you use this driveway or wanna circulate back around and out, that would be.
Kind of, if people are on lunch breaks, then go, go back to work at Nicholson Road, it'd be a, it'd be a shorter back than take thirty-five, one twenty-six, and again, take Nicholson Road when it says go backwards on the parking lot and go right off Nicholson Road and off McDonald's. That's it, thank you.
All right, on that note, if there's no other comments from the board, um, I will make a motion to continue the two twenty-five Pond Street special permit and site plan review to to a date after we receive feedback from the third-party review, Peter?
Uh, yeah, I think that makes sense, and, and I can work with Eric. I think at this point, um, it may make sense. Uh, I did send it to a third-party review, I can touch base with them. Typically, they do have about a week turnaround time, uh, into a week or two, so I can get back to Eric. Uh, but I think, uh, Eric, i- if you guys are comfortable, are you comfortable with the first meeting in June at this point? June ninth?
Yeah, I mean, would, would the intent be to get the peer review comments and try and revise plans and get stuff back in? I just don't know how tight it'll be. But I mean, I'd love to, to think that if we get them.
Yeah.
Get comments back in.
In all my experiences, is, is peer review will come back, and then obviously I'll give notes to you right away, I believe I CC'd uh, Dan to that email, uh, and I can move forward and CC you for Eric. Uh, and then that would give you a week or two to make any comments, and then, uh, and then as one, uh, one of our members commented, you could start prepping the application for conservation and start working through that process in the meantime, so. Uh, I believe a continuance to June, uh, excuse, yes, June ninth would be appropriate.
Would, would going further into June allow, um, that process with the Conservation Commission to happen more easily?
Not on my end. I think it would be nice, I mean, if we can get the peer review comments back and, and come back before you're in June ninth, just to work through some of the the comments about the screening, so we can get that right.
Okay.
Would be helpful for us. Uh, I don't wanna clog up your agenda if that's an issue for you, but that would be helpful for us if we could come back June ninth.
I, I, I think that's okay, but that's fair. All right, so, um, a motion to continue until June ninth, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote.
Lakshmi Krishnanai.
Boeinga Dai.
Anna Tuskmaniskey, aye.
Yep, you're muted, Marcelo.
Always happens to me.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so that is five zero zero, we will continue this till June ninth.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on our agenda is the continued public hearing for one hundred Chestnut Street. Site plan review continued from our April twenty-eighth meeting. Peter, can you remind us where we are?
Yes, thank you so much. So at the last meeting, uh, first of all, to, to, to reintroduce Roy McDowell. Uh, Roy McDowell the third and his son Todd, uh, they're here tonight, and I believe, um, is there, are, is Roy, is your architect on? Oh, yeah, there you are, Matt. Matt Marata. How are you, Matt? Um, and so at the last meeting, I know there was, uh, some just, uh, you know, there was a lot of conversation about buildings, and I believe, um, you know, the applicant has, uh, submitted revised renderings and, uh, and views, uh, of, of the building, um, and I think there were some minor changes made, and I let Matt and, and the team run through those. Additionally, the, uh, application team submitted, uh, updated landscaping plan. Um, and then also they submitted a site planting plan to go along with the landscaping. If those, so, so those were submitted, um, and, uh, I do just wanna make note that, um, uh, based on development, uh, obviously they have the land under PNS, um, with the Fafred Company. Uh, the Fafred Company's attorney, Jeff Roloff, uh, just to, uh, quickly rewind a little bit back to the fall. Um, we really talked about this, uh, land area in question, and the plot size in the area. Well, uh, the Fafred attorney, Jeff Roloff, he's been working, uh, with, um, both parties and, and also the town reviewing the previous um, approvals. Uh, he put together a pretty, uh, lengthy memo, um, along with an email. Uh, those were sent out to the planning board today. Um, so if every planning board member can take a look at that, I just wanna make note, uh, that Lisa Lee, Town Council, will be joining our meeting on the twenty-sixth, uh, which is our next meeting, uh, and we will take that time along with, I believe, uh, the attorney, uh, from Basedon Development, uh, and I, I, I would assume, uh, any legal representation from the Fafred Company um, regarding that memo. So, uh, the next meeting, I think we're gonna focus on that land area and, and um, how that, uh, connects back to the two thousand and two covenant, which really outlined the entire project, which is known as the Village of Americas. Um, but I just want to make note, um, i- in, in the public setting that that, that will be taken up at the next meeting. So, um, with that said, uh, Chair, uh, I would like to just hand this over, uh, application back over to Mr. McDowell and his team, along with Matt Marata, and they can run through, um, the proposed changes that were submitted from the last meeting.
Great, thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you to the board for seeing us this evening. Uh, we have a number of things to show you, given our last meeting. Uh, we have updated architecturals, we have some other thoughts on colors that you wanted to see some other ideas on. Uh, Tom Miner, who's our landscape architect, is with us this evening. Uh, we'd like him to present to you our current landscape plan. And we also have put together, at the very end, you'll see, uh, some possible ideas on a, a bus shelter or a bus stop shelter, I should say, and we can look at that. So I'm gonna kind of run through a few of these quickly, because we've seen them before. This is our current proposal, which pretty much has been the same for the last couple of months. If we could go to the next one. Again, the overall view relative to our neighbors and with the dog park as proposed. Next. Again, the layout, you'll see where we've located the pool and the landscaping on the interior courtyard and the other terrace that we'd mentioned before, between two commercial components. And I think this is a good point, uh, Matt, if you could pick it up from here.
Sure.
Go over the architecture as it exists now and all the changes we've made. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Matt Marata with Icon Architecture. Um, nothing has changed on these, uh, floor plans. All we did was start to lay in, uh, the background of the current landscape plan. Uh, moving up through the building, our building has maintained the same footprint and size. Roof plan now illustrates our mansard roofs around the edges, illustrating also the potential locations of where we might have some condenser units. Um, and then showing where some of the building sections, uh, site sections are cut through. Our elevations have been modified slightly on the backside, and it'll be easier to present the modifications in the perspective, since these are kind of a smaller scale. Uh, but just wanted to reiterate that we do have these updated and they are in the current package. Some building sections and the rest of the interior elevations. We went over this last time. This is the overall building section, illustrating how we are planning on screening the condensing units with pitched roofs. Site sections, we had presented this a number of meetings ago. Uh, we have updated it with our current elevations, um, showing the different uh, site configurations at different locations. As you can see from the site sections, at any given point, sometimes our building uh, is above the existing townhouses in the Villages of Americas, and sometimes our building is below it. Uh, and that's due to the significant grade change that happens at the edge of the property. Um, but after that, this does start to level off, and I know you guys had asked for some, uh, overall perspectives from the Village of Americas to see roof condensers and the back of the building, and we have those presented as well later on. Um, updated renderings, nothing's changed on this perspective. It remains the same along Pond Street. Again, the retail entry, it remains the same. This is the same, the same, and then now we, um, the big, the only, the change that we did here was, there was a comment about the back of the building not having enough, uh, depth, so we really, we, we wanted to be careful with the balconies pushing in. I think there was a comment about that being difficult to lean, so it can be. Uh, we did it along the front to help alleviate some of the facade, but what we did here is we cut back some of the roof areas, we inset the decks a couple of feet in these two locations to help break up the massing, um, and allow us to kind of, uh, play around with the color a little bit more, as you'll see later on in the presentation. And that is the biggest change that happened on this backside. The front, uh, remains the same. Uh, you guys had also asked us to take some more perspectives, kind of back into the public realm to show how it might, uh, interact with the rest of the property. Um, this is looking on the corner of Chestnut Street, and you can see the outline of the townhouses in the back. Um, this is that, uh, retaining wall that's running along the parking that has, that was continued from the entrance. Stepping back even further, looking down Pond Street, um, there's a significant amount of, uh, existing mature landscaping trees on this side of the property, um, and there is a small building, uh, down at the end here that you can just barely start to see, it's a single-story building. Uh, coming on the opposite side of the property on Chestnut Street, looking in, again, you can start to see the townhouses popping up in the background. Taking some snapshots from the Village of Americas, this one is actually taken right from the second story, uh, from this townhouse. These are modeled accurately. We got the site plan and imported it into the model. Um, as you can see, even at the second floor, you're still not seeing any condensers or any parts of the roof. Just another shot from the opposite side, looking through a couple of the townhouses. And then one way down, um, at grade, uh, you guys have seen this one before, just illustrating how the height of the Arborvitie and Evergreen, uh, screen will be blocking a significant portion of the property. This is the updated rendering again, showing the insets. And that's, uh, there was no, Eric, there was no color.
Matt, you hit, you hit the skip to the end button on the last one.
I did, sorry. There we go. Um, so we did look at a couple of color options. I, I, actually, let me go back to this one. We did update the color scheme in this one as well. Uh, previously, I think we had beige and just the blue. We broke it up with the blue, beige, and then blue again, uh, utilizing those insets to help delineate the color change. Um, another option we looked at was instead of white gable ends, maybe those are looking a little intense, uh, incorporating the other colors from the building into these gable ends um, to help define and give a little bit more character. And then what happens if we bring a pop of color, something more robust and, um, vibrant, well, so we had played around with some red accents along the gable ends as well. You guys had previously asked for some, uh, more views and, uh, uh, illustrations of what the screening was gonna look like at the parking garage. Uh, here you can see what we're illustrating is, um, similar to what this screen is doing, where it's simple, either tube steel, aluminum, and then as a metal infill, and we, we haven't settled on a specific s- style yet. Uh, we do know we need to maintain, uh, at least a fifty percent opening, uh, to, to allow the garage to be an open garage without ventilation. Um, but this is essentially what you'll see in the insets, um, and they're typically about two to four feet across and, uh, about six feet tall as well. Um, we also discussed what, briefly, what some of the sustainable and design strategies were gonna be on the project, so we kind of made a whole list here. Uh, we are saying we're designing to lead certifiable standards, you know, we are, uh, some smart growth, uh, design strategies, and lead is Uh, we are saying we're designing to lead certifiable standards. You know, we are, uh, some smart growth, uh, design strategies and lead is compact development. Uh, we have a significant amount of green space, so we're reducing a heat island reduction. We do, um, white, uh, roofing as well instead of black TPO. You know, there's a lot of community resources that this project can bring to, to the, to the area and to the building, um, sharing, uh, activities and events that are happening in town. Uh, typically we have a, uh, uh, a setup at the main lobby or mailroom area with a screen, kind of cycling through different events that are happening in the town, um, and other such activities. You know, we are proposing to use, um, flow fixtures, so we're reducing water usage. We've talked about the EV spaces that we are currently providing and the ability to expand on that in the future. We are going to have all energy star appliances, all LED interior lighting, uh, I mentioned the low flow toilets. We are going to do a, uh, all electric system, um, no gas now, um, and, uh, meet a lot of the energy star standards. And you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have a sizable, uh, bike storage area and fix-it station. I think that's a popular amenity in a lot of these developments anyways, regardless of it being a, uh, sustainable. Uh, I'll turn it back over to, uh, Roy.
Uh, do you want to take this?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Matt, and I appreciate that. And I think one of the changes Matt mentioned was that we are now proposing to go, uh, with the electric instead of gas for the, the heating and, and, uh, in ranges. So that's, uh, uh, something new for us that we're kind of excited to, to do is per, per the board's request. Uh, on this, uh, you've seen this slide before. This is the potential bus shelter location. We've had conversations with the, uh, infrastructure committee and, um, they, they've had a little bit of mixed, um, thoughts, but we think the initial, uh, is, is, is thought is positive and we're going to meet with them in a couple of weeks to present this plan further. We've shared these coming slides with them. Do you want to go to the next one, Matt? So this is just a, uh, possible bus shelter that we've come up with. It's kind of, um, we felt fit, the setting could look nice without looking too, um, commercial. It's got a roof. It's, it's covered. We've got plantings and it's open, so people can see, uh, vehicles coming from any direction. It just provides a location and a shelter that isn't too imposing without cutting off any of the, uh, potential views, uh, up or down the street. Um, and it, this also, it provides access to the, to the curb cut that goes into the road right there. So people could use that and walk right out to the bus on that, uh, curb cut there. Yes, and that just kind of shows you the, uh, on the top right, the overall location. Uh, the last slide is just to give us a close up. It's one more slide that, this just shows you the dimensions that, um, it is, uh, how big it is. It's thirteen feet, uh, on the roof lines by eleven feet. And on the, uh, in between the posts, it's a little bit over eleven by nine, and it should accommodate a good number of people to protect them from, uh, rain or snow. So as they wait for a bus without, um, we go, because it will only really be used occasionally. We didn't want to build something that was too intrusive in view. So we thought this limited, really how much it affected people's view when they pull in and out, uh, from Queen Isabella out of Chestnut. I, I think that's onto landscape. Tom, um, from, go ahead, Roy.
Yeah, go ahead. Tom Miner, if you could take it from here, please.
Uh, just one minute. I gotta make Tom a brief, uh, view of the share screen. Oh, this is the screen. Excuse me.
Yes, he is just able to talk.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Tom, you seem to be on.
Good evening, board members. Tom Miner, hot design planner, landscape architect. Uh, this plan represents the, uh, our initial, uh, stab at, uh, site landscape design. It's, um, you know, it's, it's a preliminary plan that'll progress further as, as we get more information on the, on the engineering and the, uh, the architecture. But, uh, basically we have this, uh, center courtyard here. Uh, we have the pool in the center. We have lawn on the left. We have, uh, lifestyle patios. In the, in the, uh, right-hand side here, those are, uh, uh, combination of, uh, perhaps a fire pit, table seating, uh, grill area. Um, and, uh, so a small lawn area. Uh, as you could, and between the commercial spots, we, there's a, there's a more of a public, uh, space there that'll be predominantly paved. We'll try to break it up with some landscaping to, for different groupings. Uh, it'll be fenced off on the top and the bottom, so that there won't be, uh, uh, traffic into the, to the residential courtyard will be, um, reduced, if not eliminated. Um, around the site, if we look at the top of the site, we've got, uh, some, uh, fast-growing Western Arboretis lining, lining the, uh, the, uh, that would be the east property line, uh, for a buffer to the residential, uh, um, adjacent property. Uh, throughout the site, we have, uh, a mixture of shade and flowering trees, uh, predominantly. Um, if not, uh, if not, uh, natives, uh, they are drought tolerant and, uh, suitable for, for this type of location. So we can reduce water usage and, uh, uh, maintenance and have healthy plants. Um, it's, uh, we haven't got into the shrubs obviously yet. It's, it's too early in the process. We have shown, street lighting, uh, around, uh, around the perimeter and around the building. Those are, uh, LED lights, on twelve-foot poles, uh, shielded where necessary to, prevent, uh, light spillage off property into neighbors and also into the residents', uh, bedrooms and living areas. Um, and that, that is, uh, that is as far as we've gotten at this point. Um, like I said, it's a, it's an evolving process and we're usually, um, responding to, to revisions from the architects and the engineers.
Uh, thank you, Tom. If I could to the board, so what we tried to do is create a, continual screen to protect our neighbors from a visual point of view along the upper side, going all the way down to Queen Isabella. You can see there's a continual arbor by the hedge there, which will be a very nice, uh, transition and a buffer zone between us and them. As Tom mentioned, we have a lot of mature trees around the perimeter of the property. We have quite a bit of planting in the inner courtyard. As you can see, the swimming pool with the terrace area. And, uh, wanted to get your initial reactions to this. In our next meeting, we'll have even more detail and a fin- finalized plan. At our next meeting, we just wanted to go over this with you this evening.
Could, could we, um, it, could we glance for a moment longer at the, I think you had a slide with all the sustainable efforts that you're undertaking. Could we just go back to that for, for a moment? Thank you.
I'm not sure it mentioned that we were going to go electric on this, but that is a, a, a thing we've, uh, were willing and agreeing to do.
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to say I definitely think that's great. I, I was reviewing, the prior public comment we had received from, Matt, uh, Marsh Quest regarding sustainability. And I, I think it's great that it sounds like you, you took to heart his commentary about, moving away from gas. Um, did you by chance, was there any kind of, um, research done as far as the financial incentives for actually having solar on this building? He had provided a couple of links for tax incentives, et cetera. Can you just discuss with us kind of the viability of that for this project from, from your perspective?
I, I'll have to address that if Roy found that, as is Todd. Um, we've, we've actually been talking with a couple of solar, um, uh, solar companies about putting, uh, solar panels on existing buildings. And, you know, there are incentives, but to make how fast the sets change, so incentives today, may not be good for another, you know, three months from now, they may not be active anymore. It's really about how government funding goes. So every six months, three months, a year, especially over here, it really changes out those dynamics and what, what's, what's being pushed at the moment. So it is certainly a thing we're of interest in and, um, we, we definitely want to do it. We're building the, the building so we can accommodate some solar panels. But, um, until we get to know what the, I mean, we're, we're probably, depending what time we get this approved, the, all the drawings done and get ready to go on construction. All the incentives that are being offered today will expire. It'll be a new set of incentives. What those are is a bit of a guess. Um, depending what the government's funding at that point, but it is something we're interested in doing and it does save on energy costs, especially with going all electric. It makes sense to have solar panels to help bring down the, uh, operating cost to the, to the residents. So this is something we're seriously would like to do. We, but before committing to it, we want to better understand where we are at that point with, with the, um, incentive programs.
But what, what might be nice to see is, um, is that roof plan with, um, a proposed, uh, solar system? Like where would they go? Um, they're not, um, they're avoiding the other mechanical systems that are on the roof. So we can see that it really has, um, I, I know all the roofs need, need, you know, to be designed to hold panels, but to really, um, be like, yep, we have a place for them if and when those incentives make sense, the day the building's built, or if it makes sense five years down the road or whatever, this building has a plan and, and obviously it looks like there's a lot of space, but it'd be nice to see, you know, what it can accommodate and, and really that it's been kind of thought, thought through in that way.
We, we can have that for you at the next meeting.
We, we can talk, well, we'll, we'll talk to the solar companies. It, it's really us engaging them to do, to do that work, to see what would, fit. Um, so hopefully we can have it for next meeting, but it might, depending on that, might take another meeting for that.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that would be great, but Tricia, I think you, you saw my thunder because, uh, I, I think the, the, the architecture is making a, a pretty good effort, uh, uh, on, on concealing these mechanical systems and, uh, I know you have, uh, I guess some groupings on a little donage where you put your condenses, which is a, is a very good way to do it. Uh, I, 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 I definitely, I'm interested in seeing where would you put those solar panels? Because, uh, I, 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 you, you've gone through a great effort to articulate this architecture and to make it look good and, and conceal plumbing penetrations and now the condenses. I want to make sure that it doesn't become an afterthought and you, you paste solar panels on top of, of the building in, in a way that's visually, uh, uh, detrimental, which happens a lot, uh, but, but that you can maximize the, the way, the way you do solar panels. So, when you do that, if you could do, not, not only, uh, uh, on the roof plan, but, uh, I want you to show us in the section that you showed us on how you conceal the mechanical systems. Um, uh, on that section, I would like to see how it works, uh, to make sure that from the perspective, and there's, there's way to do it because you have no obstruct, uh, obstructions there. So, it can be fairly flat, uh, but ideally is, is you, you take the same care that you took to conceal these, these equipment to, to do the same with the solar panels.
And the other thing I was going to add as a follow-up is obviously the incentives, the tax incentives tend to relate to, actual ownership purchase of solar, right? But there's also lease and power purchase agreements that are available to this kind of development as well. And there are partnerships, the town of Ashland has had regard solar, um, as you might be familiar with, and, and our planning office can tell you more about that. And we have solar companies here in the community that may be good to partner with regarding a lease. So I'd like to hear not just kind of, the viability of purchase, but also any research you've done on, on a lease, power purchase agreement that might benefit not just this particular building, but your neighborhood, um, and others in the community. Um, I'd like to hear a little bit more. I think that we have some incentive, not incentive, we have some, agency, if you will, as a planning board and as a town relative to this particular, uh, property, um, due to the covenant to, to talk about those things in a way that we may not in a different project. Because it's, it's a community resource, um, and we have some, some leeway as a board that we may not otherwise.
Right. Um, other comments from the board? Anyone want to jump in on other, other concerns, questions, issues? I, I will jump in a little bit on the, um, on the bus shelter. Um, can you repeat what you said that you, you've, you have met with members of the community or haven't been able to do that yet? What did you think?
Well, sure, I, I can speak to that. So I, I spoke to Jen, who was the manager of the various communities. And I did speak to one of the infrastructure committee members, who wasn't sure if it was really necessary. So I sent these images today over to Jen, who was sending them around to some of their board members and some of the community members. And she said that within the next two weeks, she'd like for us to have a meeting with them to discuss it, to see what their thoughts are on the viability and is it something they want to see?
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think that's fair. I think it's, um, because it's, it's something, you know, it's something we want to provide if it helps the community to solve a problem. If it's just going to be, um, neglected or unused, then, then obviously that's, um, that's money that could be put somewhere else for, for, um, for community benefit. If i- in terms of this, if, if it is, if we are looking at, um, a bus stop or a bus shelter, um, I think, I, I think we can relook at this. When I think of this as a place for kids, uh, um, I don't really see the plantings there like that. You know, I mean, how can this be a place where, you know, that kids will hang out or, the, not for a long period of time. Obviously they're just waiting for the bus. But, um, but I think it's a, a design project in a different way. And I don't, I don't think this says, kids, kids bus stop, um, in, it's not what I was, like, maybe, not that I was expecting a certain image, but it's not really, I'm surprised that it looks like this.
Well, we, we can show you in images. We've done them before of an actual bus shelter companies that make them. They basically have a similar roof and they have, for lack of a better term, plexiglass around the perimeter and the front is open.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm interested in something that the companies make them and we just, we just stick it in the spot. You know, I'm interested in something that, goes with the rest of the architecture that you're proposing at one hundred Chestnut Street. Or at least is a, at least is a, a combination between hundred, one hundred Chestnut Street and the condos beyond and the dog park on one side. And the idea that this would be, you know, but, but the idea of it, unless it's, unless it's unneeded, was a place for, for kids to get out of the rain while they're waiting for the, for the bus stop. And, um, and so I'm looking for, I'm looking for a design project that is more, doesn't have to be complicated, doesn't have to be expensive, but is at least engaging.
I'm trying to.
I'm, I'm sure what you mean, yeah.
I don't know what you mean by engaging.
Um, I guess I'd have to Google bus shelter and see what comes up.
I'd say if you could do that, if you get two or three images you like, if you get, send them to Peter and have Peter send them to us, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a little design project, um, that should reflect other elements of the neighborhood and not be something that comes in a kit.
We're not, we're not trying to just make it comes as a kid, like a custom building, uh, or fully designing a, a, just a bus shelter. Um, you know, it's significant cost, the more you get into custom projects like that. And, you know, it's, it's off the site we're developing. I know it's, I, I think this is actually, I don't know if it's on the public layer within the easement. And, you know, it, it does start adding a significant cost for something that we're, we're, we're trying to solve a problem that's already existing that, uh, isn't, as related to this current project we're proposing.
Yeah, I would say this is about fitting into the Wildwood district, which is part of, definitely a part of your project. And if we can't accommodate it on the site that you have, then we have to fit the, then we have to fit fitting into the Wildwood district in, um, on another spot. So.
I think, I think, I think the spot is fine. I guess we're a little confused. We're not quite sure what you want.
Okay. I'm not sure I do it either. I, I did. It's like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a design project, not, not, um, um, so I guess if, if this, if this bus shelter was located on your site, on your exact site in relationship to the building you're creating, then what it would look like? I, I think this would kind of stand out kind of strangely next to the building that you're creating.
Is it like, uh, sorry to interrupt, doing probably a gazebo sort of look? Like the one that they have up in the park area on the.
No, not necessarily. I don't think it's a gazebo, but, um, it's all thinking outside the box, I, I guess, um.
And I mean, if, if I could, I just kind of, I, I, I agree with where Trish is, is heading on this. I think the constant, obviously there's a practical utilitarian question of whether the neighborhood envisions this the way we do. Um, but I had a similar reaction when I saw it where, this strikes me as more kind of, much more casual than I anticipated. this strikes me as more kind of much more casual than I anticipated. And less, you know, less um less consistent with the design of your building, kind of and less consistent with the neighborhood. And I I mean, I have a couple of images that I I literally just pulled, thinking about the just, you know, the Wildwood area and what what is this area supposed to be, how it's kind of the vibrancy, the the nature of it, the the consistency with the energy of of this neighborhood. So I have a few images. I'll forward them to Peter. Um, and Peter, when time is right, maybe you can share those images with with the team.
Yeah, I'll I'll share those with the planning board and I can also share them obviously with with the based on development too.
Sounds great. Thanks, Anna.
But what we'll do is we'll take a look at those. We'll having this conversation, we'll have a little conversation with Matt and our team and look at this from a different perspective.
Yeah, and I do think it has a lot to do, obviously, with um with the residents, that the first kind of the first things that you said, that you haven't had time to meet with them. We wanna make sure we more wanna make sure it's something that that they're like, yes, thank you. This is this is, you know, this will be really helpful to us. Like, if they're like, eh, why you why you putting this thing up? Then maybe it's not, maybe it's not the right move.
No, I appreciate that. We'll we'll get that, try and get that understanding from them for our next meeting.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the board? We 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 should go back to maybe looking at the at the color, um, just to kind of give some general direction with that we.
Yeah, I I do have a comment about that, Tricia.
I thought you might.
Please don't use the red.
Thank you.
That 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 will be one comment. I I I like what what you're trying to do with that articulating the the cables a little bit better, because when when you give it when when you leave it really pale and and base, they they kind of take it alive on their own. I I I I personally like what the direction you're going. I think the buildings, it it there's some variety and and I I like the top left uh image myself. Uh, definitely not the red one.
Yeah, I think we like that one as well.
I think for me, I I I think I like the left one. It's a little hard to tell.
Can you zoom that in, Matt? No, you gotta drop it down, Matt.
Yeah, sorry, it's a little hard to tell that this is changing color on this piece here in the middle in between the two incense.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that has, I think that has promise. I think maybe um next time, maybe show like this one next to the original one now that we've that we've taken out the red.
Matt, you have it with the white, right?
Okay.
Here, I can uh, Trish, give me one second. I can.
I mean, I don't know if I don't know if we're making a on-the-spot decision about color, but just to be able to see them a little a little better.
I think it goes with the variety that that I guess we talked a few minutes ago about trying to make this look like a village, not just a like a large solid massive building. And 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 this, I think, helps.
Why the beige kind of gave it a little verticality? It feels like the maybe it's the the fact that the one on the left-hand top has two dark colors next to it, so it feels a little strong and feels like it's starting to lose that verticality, and it feels like the colors maybe too close to one another. It could be that as well. Um, the white kind of the beige kind of helped with defining the verticality versus that mass or or the band of colors that was going across at least the more I stared, I did. That's what I started to notice.
But deep, but that does a good point, because I I didn't notice that the 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 one on the right has vertical siding or a board and button uh siding, whereas the one on the left goes back to flat boards.
Yeah.
I um, yeah, I get it.
But I guess you are on the right path of trying to break that. Yes, I think all of us unanimously agreed, no reds. That was a little too much, but I think between these two, I think finding the right balance, maybe it's not too dark colors, but still kind of getting that verticality to help you break out that band that's going across.
If I I don't think we it it wasn't intended that we were gonna lose the vertical. That just happened when we were doing the render. We can certainly re-render it with the vertical siding and and the color as well.
That'll be good.
The the other thing I wanted to revisit is the screens. If if you can go back to that slide. Yes, it's so the patterns you're showing on the right are the various screens would have to which have to have to allow at least fifty percent airflow. But on the on the left, are they not covered with glass? Like, what am I?
But just looking at an angle.
Yeah, it it it's 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 the rendering. It doesn't do a great job illustrating the perforation and seeing through it.
Okay, I'm looking through and seeing the marsh through. Okay, okay.
But the intent would be that it's, you know, these are shown, you know, at least fifty percent open. This is this is what the uh amount would look like, how solid and opaque it would actually be.
So Matt, Matt, wha- what is the material of the ceiling inside the garage?
Uh, we haven't discussed that yet. We've done these projects both ways where they're open, exposed underneath, and it's just uh uh painted a dark color, so it it kind of vanishes. Um, uh, in this situation where we have an open garage, uh, we'll have to go through, uh, you know, discussing if we are gonna do a hard ceiling, is it heated? There's a lot of.
I think most like, I think most likely what we'll do is a drop se- a ceiling with a heated blend.
Yeah, because you have to insulate this level.
Yeah, we do, and we don't wanna have issues with frozen pipes.
Yeah. So so if it's a drop ceiling, you'll be highly visible from from this viewpoint.
Well, you won't see you won't see the ceiling.
Marcel, the 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 inside is illustrated just as like a white plane right now, so that if there was a drop ceiling, that's what it would you would see through to that.
Okay.
Any any thoughts? We we personally like the screen in the upper left because it's a little more solid. Um, gives you a little more opaque look than the others, which are a little more open. Does the board have any thoughts on this?
The transparency, the more the color will bleed through versus if you have the smaller perforations, it starts to become an element until you kind of paint it um or kind of change that color. Otherwise, your metal is going to start to look like a solid mass.
Now, we've probably painted a dark gray or something similar, something that blends in, but and you also don't want the sun beating on the metal reflecting on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess it's it's also a little bit of play with the rendering. Right now, it looks like the metal is getting rendered as a glass because it's showing some reflection somehow. So I think it's trying to the transparency.
There's uh sorry, there's no reflection turned on. You're seeing through into the garage. Those are the cars inside the garage.
Yeah, but you're seeing windows, right?
There's windows on the opposite side of the garage.
Oh.
For open for the open garage, we have to have both sides.
Yeah.
It's it's a two-way, two-lane parking, right? I mean, two sides.
Correct. Yeah, tho- those aren't windows. On the other hand, there's screens just like this.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of design details. You you have a little way to go before you.
Yeah, and I thought I think my um my thought the last time with it when we've been talking about this is wondering is is always just the alternative. This not not with the fill-in screen is not not those types, but is this whole bottom layer of garage treated in a different treated in a different manner as if the rest of the building is is, you know, on a base, on on a different base? I I don't know if that's a better solution. It was just one that I was interested in seeing like, is this this is just all this sounds like this is just always the way you do these. Is is there is there another option of ways that you have done these bays differently, not mimicking the fact that there's an apartment there?
Uh, I've seen it where there's just uh raw concrete coming down. It's not, it I I don't think it's as good looking. You just have the concrete columns coming down exposed. Matt, have you done it a different way?
Yeah, uh, um, we've done, we've certainly done it that way. We haven't done any infill screens and it's just open. Um, I think Basedon wants to do the screens for privacy and for security reasons. Uh, we we've done the in, we've done uh larger openings uh between uh columns. We'll still need an intermittent post, but with uh horizontal pieces. I didn't feel like that worked very well here. It's kind of sticks out like a sore thumb. Our intent was to have these openings kind of melt into the overall facade, so it doesn't stand out. We didn't wanna call attention to the garage.
Yeah, yeah. And and you and you might be right in this case. I mean, I you know, you know, as well as as we did, that there's there's all kinds of kind of new ways of um putting a skin on a on a parking garage these days. There's pretty wonderful, you know, ones out there, but it it may not. You know, this may not be the right you know, the right place for it. It might be a place that needs to be more quiet as as the residential neighborhood is.
Yeah, it it's it's also, it it doesn't extend across the whole facade either. So part of the ground floor on this elevation would be units, so that was another reason why we wanna kind of continue those, the rhythm of openings along this area, this side.
The other thing that I that this just this view just brought up to me, and and this is kind of a level of detail that I don't think we're at yet, so um just that said, is that the tree is right where the two materials come together, and I'm really curious as to what's behind the tree. Um, so again, I don't think we're at that level of detail, but but understanding how those, you know, what what happens there is is going to be a.
You're talking about where the siding comes, where the two materials change?
Yes.
We we do a um color match regular to uh one of the material colors. So it's just a thin piece of aluminum.
And it just changes color?
Hmm.
Okay. And that's when there isn't a transition.
This is it's this is at the inset, so actually it it's kind of a weird, yeah, you're right. It is a weird, that isn't corner, right? Because this is now inset, and at those outside corners, we do a color match regular and then the inside corners as well.
Okay, like I said, I don't think we're quite into, you know, looking at that time to to bring that up, that level of detail is, you know, it's kind of do it's just that that tree happened to be right on that line.
I think I think I think Matt just put that there schematically. I don't think it's meant to be in a particular location.
Oh, right, right. I just study it for a while to understand what was happening there. Okay, so um, any other questions from the planning board before I open it up to any public comment?
I don't one quickly, just I I appreciate the views from kind of further out, looking at it from uh, you know, up on the hill and and out on that corner where where we're looking at the bus shelter, and I I think that's the most like imposing view is from the bus shelter where you you've got the ringing wall and from that grade, it's the building something like sixty feet tall, looking up from from the bus shelter. Um, showing nice screening with with trees around there. I'm just wondering, are those those trees that you show, is that their mature heights or is that their planted heights? Are we looking at a twenty years from now view or are we looking at when this is built? That would be like a thirty-foot tree or something like that.
Yeah, that's that's probably five years from now. Remember, you're looking at it on an angle because there's quite a bit of gray drop there.
Right, yeah, I I think I looked at the grading plan and from the street here to the top of the building is sixty-three feet. So that's a pretty tall tree.
Well, again, you're looking at it at an angle because you're only gonna be looking at it from five and a half feet. It's kind of a, it's a deceiving angle.
For yeah, the your view and the perspective, these trees are only illustrated between fifteen and twenty feet tall. There, you know, it's it's view sightline to the building, so even though it is that tall, the the trees screen it well without being as tall as the building itself.
Okay.
Any further questions from the planning board? All right, then, Peter, can we open it up to public comment, if any?
Of course. Right now, I'm just gonna put through. I do not believe there's any hands up to public comment. If anybody would like to comment, please raise your hand or step forward, make a motion. Uh, so at this current time, no one has their their hands, so I think we can uh.
All right. So any other comments from the board? I think to summarize for next time, we will be looking at um Lisa Mead will be here and we will be looking at the site as a whole, um after reviewing the documentation that Peter has has sent to us today. You said, right, Peter? I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I sent it out probably around two thirty-ish.
Okay.
So and and it's a pretty dense and and obviously it includes some a lot of historical findings and 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 things that obviously I don't think any, well, I do know that I wasn't a part of, nor anyone on the planning board is part of going back twenty years. So um I've done my best to do my research, but if anybody has any questions, concerns, wanna reach out, just kind of talk about, you know, each other's point of view on it. I'm happy to, you know, converse and 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 I am obviously. I'm in the office and and I have no friend who's uh uh I'm in the office all next week, Monday through Thursday.
So that'll be for sure on May twenty-sixth, which is obviously essential to the project going forward as presented. I think also the other things that have come up um are the diagram of of solar capabilities and how that would work. Um, uh, um, relooking at the colors and and colors and and uh siding orientations, textures that we started that discussion here and think it's going in the right direction, a look at the bus stop with the public feedback. Um, any other, any other things on that list that I that I missed? Okay.
If I if I could, as Roy speaking, uh, we'll we'll get those things put together for you relative to the angle of solar panels. The bus stop will meet with neighbors. Uh, we can take another quick look at the colors. I know we need to spend some more time in the landscaping with you. Well, obviously, the civil engineering will be coming in soon. Can we assume at this point that we're good on the architecture, putting aside colors for a minute?
I I think we haven't, and anyone can jump in here, but we haven't had any other major questions about the form of the building. Um, I do think at this time, this would project and and the board can comment on this, that this is a time we would potentially send this back to the design review committee for them, that it it's at a level of detail, that that might be a a good place to look at the landscape in more detail rather than in um planning board. But I think the general form seems to have that it doesn't seem to be a point of um conversation anymore. Any any comments on that?
I agree with you, Tricia.
Okay. Um.
Is there a concern going, is there a concern going back to the design committee that we may start all over with certain things that they may look at differently than you?
No, because at at this point, the, you know, if we're sending them something at at this stage, we feel like going to the design review committee is a place to get more in-depth on the plantings in their current locations or to get involved in the siding um or detailing on the building, mastering as it as it stands. So and not um and not going and not going backwards from from where we're from where we're at. I we and again, I I asked the planning board to to jump in as well, but I I see it as an opportunity to allow it to go into more detail in that forum, and then the the uh design review committee um comes back to us with their with their comments. And um and that'll. And um and that allows it to be looked at in greater depth. Does it?
Can I, can I ask a question, please? Typically, this is the level of presentation that we would always present for planning board and designer review committee. You keep saying more detail. I'm, um, I just want to clarify what that actually means, because more detail at this stage would be going into construction documents essentially.
I I think for me, it's just looking about those like, like I had a connection about how does the two, those two colors come together? So maybe it's about looking at the building, first of all, like without the, without the vegetation in the way, you know? Um, and then it would also be looking at the vegetation, um, maybe in more detail.
Can I make a suggestion, Tricia?
Please, yep.
Uh, I I think the the way, the way that 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 we can make it um to make sure it's proactive uh and not regressive would be to uh to define, say, the uh, a small bullet list of points that we want reviewed and say, okay, how about the the garage screens? Seems like there's, there's still a lot of gray area there. It's ve- it's a very visible feature. We want their input on that. The landscape and plantings, the the uh siding orientation. But we we can, we can narrow down, so it doesn't become like a a free-for-all discussion that doesn't help anybody. But something that helps the the board get their their input from the design review committee and helps the architect and the and the opponent um, um, receive feedback that he's, that he's productive.
And I, I would add the bus shelter to that list.
Yes.
I think these are the kinds of things that, just so we're clear, the design review committee essentially functions to assist us. So it's not a separate jurisdictional decision maker. They're, they're giving recommendations to us. We're the ones who are going to vote on this project. Not the design review committee. So just so that there's no confusion. It's not like it's a different layer that you guys have to go through. It's, it's a committee that that we appoint that helps us um get into the graining details of pieces of this that could take hours to figure out. Um, and it would speed us up and make it efficient. And I I would certainly propose that we move those i- those three items that Marcelo just identified, including the bus shelter, to design review as quickly as possible, so that we can get that input for the next, for the next hearing.
That that would be much appreciated. We, we went ba- uh before the design review committee twice already. And it was a pretty broad scope of discussion, so narrowing that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, and we apologize for that. We are kind of figuring out as we go. The designer review committee has kind of been um re- re-strengthened, re kind of brought into our process lately, and we're still trying to figure out the process um exactly how things happen, but we want to use them to the the best effect. Um, and so I think Marcelo's idea about having a bullet pointed list, these are the things that we we want to get a little deeper on um without, without backtracking um is, sounds like the the right approach, you know, for this project.
That would be very helpful, because to give them a defined scope, so we don't go off in twelve directions would be very helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
Do that side lighting to the landscape elements, so that right now that's not there as part of the renderings, but it's there on the landscape plans, just to see how those elements kind of tie into that architecture as well be part of it, so.
Yeah, I think as far as kind of backtracking, if the design review committee has specific a list of items they'd like us to think about, I'm not opposed to that. You know, I think that there is a benefit to fresh set of eyes, because the planning board focuses on a lot of bigger, bigger issues. So we're looking at the forest and they are looking at the trees. Um, so I'm not against their, you know, if we give them a list, I think one of the points should be, what do they believe we're missing? Um, and I'd like to hear that as well.
I I think that's fair. I think it just wants to come back to us in um in a written form, outmaking the applicant make changes um based on that.
Yeah, I think this is what we discussed with them last time around. I think we would like to see uh some, some form of a report uh that gets circulated to the board and and then we would have the information we need for the, for the, the other discussion.
It would be helpful if we could get a copy of that list in advance, so we're prepared for that.
As far as the dog park, is there some clearing that you're proposing of trees? Um, because if if so, I I'd like to add that to the list for design review, to at least peek at it and see what the design is. And comment on it.
Our intent is to leave the vast majority of the trees there and have them within the park itself.
I think the stuff we'd be cutting would be the small little saplings or something, just so there and leaving the larger trees. So there's still room for for dogs to run, but um leave all the trees over a certain caliber.
I mean, I I I'd want them to comment on that. I I don't think this board would benefit from getting into the the details of which sapling is going to come down or et cetera, but I I think the designer review could be helpful to us on that. Um, to have them look at the design, comment on on their thoughts on what is going to be designed.
Access as well.
Correct. So I would add that to the list.
Uh, Ian and I, just to jump in, I've created a little bit of a list, so I can put it in a memo format and I can send it out to everybody uh as soon as tomorrow. And if anybody wants to add that, uh just get back to me and obviously I'll search the list over to Roy uh and and his two sons and his team. And then I'll I'll also send it over to the design review working with Emma, who will be sc- who could, who who will work to schedule that meeting.
Okay. Any, any other comments before we move on? Peter, do you need to request a continuance?
Uh, I think yes, I think at this point, uh, uh, working with uh Todd, I think I believe I worked with Todd the last couple of times. Uh, Todd, if you can send an email over, a question to continue, which I think we're in full agreement. And it makes sense to uh continue this meeting until um, excuse me, May twenty-sixth. Uh, with town council coming and being present, I would like to put this first on the agenda at seven fifteen, possibly.
We agree to that.
So um make a motion to continue the one hundred Chestnut Street site plan review to sorry, May twenty-sixth at seven, at seven fifteen.
Second though.
And a roll call vote?
Actually, Christian, I.
Anna Tespiniski, I.
Marcelo, I.
And Tricia Kendall, so that is five zero zero. And we will see you on the twenty-sixth and with um Lisa Mead as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And and Tricia, I know I'm about to step out. Um, can I ask for uh Peter's assistant? While I'm away, I'm going to do some homework and review those minutes. I think there was four sets of minutes that we were supposed to review for today, but I never got them. Would you be able to email those to me, Peter?
We're still working on them. I think Emma jumped off, and so I don't think we were able to do that. We didn't get it. We we weren't able to finish those in the office, so I am sorry.
No, no worries. I was going to use my, my break to to keep working on board business.
Yeah.
I think there was one set that went through, right, Peter?
There was one set that came out um that we were able to finalize. And I will dig those out and I will send them over to you.
Wonderful.
As I introduce five oh one.
Okay.
Um, and before we do that, uh remaining members of the board, do we want to take a few minute break? Three minutes, about three to five minutes?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, probably the best opportunity for, um, okay, so we will take um five minute break um and um or less, if everyone comes back on. Um, and continue after that. Meanwhile, um Anna Tespiniski will be will be stepping out for five oh one Pond Street and associate member uh Kevin McLean will be taking her place.
And Peter, you'll text me to come back.
Yes, I will text you to come back. No problem.
Short, short break, everyone, and then we'll be back.
We're just waiting for Lakshmi. Do you want to send a text to Lakshmi, Peter? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were not back yet. Okay. No, no worries. Okay, so I think we are back on. So we will, um we will start our third public hearing, um reopening public hearing for five oh one Pond Street special permit and site plan view, having been continued from the April twenty eight um meeting. Peter, update?
Yes, so since our last meeting, uh which we mostly focused on the um front entrance in the Pond Street, um the planning board had a couple of requests uh and the applicant did provide those. And so what was submitted to the planning board were a few things. Um, number one, there was a memo dated uh May fifth uh that outlines those things. Um, number one, the applicant submitted a uh full updated civil engineering package, a full site and the site plan package. Um, at this point, I think uh after tonight, I will send that out to uh third party review. It's acceptable by the planning board. Second, there was a updated uh landscaping plan uh created by uh Copper Wolf Design Team. And that gets back to the um front entrance. And and I apologize uh the, the I I forget about the, what the wall, I I don't remember the uh the access. Special report, but escapes me at this time. Um, additionally, the applicant has provided um a memo concerning the demographic report, and this was in uh the the applicant who actually developed and owned Ashland Woods for a number of years was able to hold the same numbers um from the Ashland Woods development. And this is a relationship in to how many uh residents that is predicted to be living uh within this development and then also with the number of schoolchildren. Uh, just to make note, out of the sixty units at Ashland Woods, um last I was identified, I believe, in uh the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, there were a hundred and five residents with ten school age children. Um, the development that we're talking about today is a hundred and twenty units, so multiplying that out. Um, obviously, uh of 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 the forecasted projection, indoor projection would be that this development would uh would would be home to about a hundred and ten plus or minus residents and twenty school age children. Um, so that was provided by the applicant. Additionally, there was a memo concerning uh real estate taxes um that would be collected uh from a proposed development. Uh, and that also is uh in relationship to how much the town um currently connect, collects in real estate taxes today. Um, this all is the person on the town website, but I'm happy to go over it uh right now. Um, but right now, I think this this fiscal year, they current property owner pays about twenty thousand dollars in taxes. Um, this proposed development would generate about uh six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars Um, this proposed development would generate about, uh, six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars in annual tax income for the town of Ashland. With school age children, I was able to multiply that out, um, using, um, Ashland budget numbers. Uh, currently, the town of Ashland, uh, per pupil, uh, pays about fifteen and a half thousand dollars, uh, per child per school year. So if there was, um, twenty plus or minus schoolchildren living in this development, um, that would cost the town of Ashland about, uh, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Just for some back of the math and math. Um, we can get deeper into other elements, but I think that just kind of covers a portion of it. And then also the applicant has provided a memo updating us on, um, the procedure outlined, um, within the development and, and what really the, uh, the changes that has occurred since the last meeting. And so with that, um, if there's no questions from the board, I'll, I'll ask the applicant, Mr. Ben and Matt Stevens of Track Development to step forward and, uh, update the planning board on any elements that I missed in, uh, and then also I, Mr. Matt Marata, if you want to, uh, also as the architect for this project again. I'm sure that there's some changes that we'll want to run through, uh, along with, uh, Ian Ramsey of, uh, Copley Wolf. So Matt and Ben, please, uh, step forward and, uh, take the stage.
Uh, thank you, Peter. Um, a couple of things on the school age children. We, uh, know the data from Ashland, but we don't from, uh, Ashland Woods. Um, but we don't know how many actually attend Ashland schools. We do have some divorce situations, so cha- children are listed, um, as potential residents. But we don't know if Ashland is their primary school, uh, so we don't, we don't know that.
Okay.
Number.
Understood.
We, we think it's high, um, but just to point that out. Um, we also did a, a short memo, um, within the Pond Street overlay. There is probably a eight to ten bullet point, um, criteria that we tried to, um, I think we submitted with our original application and then we wanted to update it, um, with some of the changes that have been made so that we could sort of conform to the, the zoning as it's written, um, for, uh, purview of review, if you will. Um, at our last meeting, we concentrated mostly on some, uh, tweaks to the, the woo nerf, uh, the landscaping feature out front, um, along with some, uh, other landscape issues. Um, not so much on the architectural, we're probably not going to talk about that tonight. We'll let Matt, uh, bring the plans up to, um, a higher level of review for our next meeting. Um, but we do have Ian, uh, Rami here to speak about, about some of the changes he made to the landscape plan. We've also asked, um, Bob Michaud to be here because we did update our track report. Uh, we didn't know whether, um, you'd like, uh, him to speak to that, uh, briefly, or if that goes to a third party. Um, it's up to you, but he's available to discuss it. Um, uh, and you see on our civil plans, there was some discussion about truck turning radiuses, fire truck turning radiuses. So we added that on to our, our civil plan set. Um, so with, uh, with that, I'll probably turn everything over to Ian to, um, take it from there.
Great, thanks, Ben. Good evening, everyone, for the record, uh, Ian Rami with Copley Wolf Design Group. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I actually have to be authorized.
Yeah, I'm having some trouble with my Zoom, so let me take a second, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Tricia, are you a co-host? I was going to take a break, I think when I move, when I, during the break, something.
Um, Peter, it says Matt's the co-host, Matt Marata.
Oh, Matt Marata.
I don't know how to un-host myself.
Well, can you make me a co-host, like, um? I think I, I'm, I.
How do I make you a co-host?
You right-click under the, the three, there were three little dots on, on the left-hand screen on the, as you hover over my, uh, my picture.
There's no option to make you the host.
Okay, so I apologize when I, uh, changed locations, uh, something happened, so.
No, this is something with the Zoom, there's been an update last two days and it is not as intuitive as it was ten days back where you could right-click and make somebody a host or not. So I know we are having that issue at work, so there's something either it kind of is part of your initial Zoom invite where you probably have an access, but there's something new that's called apps at the bottom of your screen, I don't know how many of you are seeing that. And you actually have to sign in.
Looks like you got him on the participant list.
Yeah, of course, no.
Okay, there it goes. Okay, can you guys see the screen?
Uh, yes, we can see it.
Great. Yep, thank you. Okay, so, um, yeah, we have a fairly short slideshow, uh, just going over some of the responses from our meeting last week. Uh, I'll run through those and then we can have a discussion, um, and then decide if we'll, we'll open it up for, um, the traffic discussion with Bob. So going back to our, uh, meeting last two weeks ago now on the twenty eighth, uh, some of the comments that we received, um, having to do with the landscape, so, uh, comments were that, uh, we wanted to show evergreen screening more robustly on the north and west perimeters. Uh, we were asked to extend that screening along the full length of the northern side. Uh, we talked about in the woo nerf frontage to consider adjusting the angles of the pedestrian crossings, um, kind of going back to the original concept sketch that we presented in our first meeting. Uh, there was a question about confirming the travel lane widths and the maneuverability of the vehicles through the parking lot. I think Ben indicated that, um, you know, the civil engineer has submitted a full set of plans that has those dimensions. We've, we have indicated those on our plans as well, which we can take a look at. Uh, there was a comment about studying the design of the arbor element and consider, um, integrating that as a shelter. Um, so we have some studies to show of that. And then there was a comment about leveraging the landscape design for stormwater management and sustainability. Um, and so just staying on that point, uh, there's three things that we are proposing to do with the landscape design, uh, before we look into the new, um, landscape layout. The first of which is, as we touched on before, the plant selection for, um, the landscape is going to be very heavy on the native and adapted species. There will, there will be species that are selected to, um, work with less water than, um, sort of traditional ornamental non-natives. Um, there'll also be, um, plants that are, um, sort of, uh, well acclimated to the local conditions. Uh, the second thing that we're going to do is to limit the areas of irrigation on the site. So essentially what we'd like to do is have the irrigation be in the front along, uh, Pond Street in that really focal front area. Uh, we'd also have irrigation in that central courtyard. And then we would extend that irrigation around what we're calling the, um, building foundation frontage. So basically between the sidewalk that surrounds the building and the face of building, that would be irrigated. The rest of the landscape on the perimeters, uh, will not be irrigated, that will be more of a kind of zero scape approach, um, intended to survive without additional water. And then the third thing that we're going to be doing is harvesting some of the rainwater from the building and putting that water into subterranean tanks. Um, those tanks will total about six thousand gallons, there'll probably be the three, um, tanks, the way the structures work. And that'll be the water that is used to irrigate the landscape. Of course, in extended periods of drought, there may not be water in those tanks, so there, um, will likely be some type of a well to augment that. But generally, we think that that's six thousand gallon capacity in those, uh, rainwater harvest tanks is going to be able to water that, um, focal landscape area. So moving into, um, the updated plan, I can just highlight on the top eye, um, we really try to punch up the graphic of where the evergreens are. So along Meeting House Path, you can see the, the block of evergreens that's intended to kind of extend the idea of that hedgerow that, um, exists along Meeting House Path. And then on the north side, which is the right-hand side of the plan, um, we've indicated that evergreen screen hedge and have extended it all the way up to the dog area, so that full, um, northern frontage is now got that, um, privacy screen. The other thing that we've done, uh, relative to the woo nerf, you can see now that those angles of the crossing um, are now closer to that original hand sketch. Um, I think that was a good comment because this, um, layout now sort of allows those cross paths to really respond to the curvilinear nature of the woo nerf. It makes it more interesting, I think, um, it just sort of creates a better organization of space. And then the last thing that we did i- is to, uh, take a look at that, um, structure that's in the programmable terrace, which is that yellow square. So if we go to the next slide, we can see this in greater detail. So here's a comparison, um, enlarging that front woo nerf area. Again, the top is the scheme that was presented last time we met. And that the scheme on the bottom is the new version, so you can get a, a good sense of how, uh, those cross paths have been reorganized to be respondent to the, um, curvilinear nature of the woo nerf. Um, I think that's afforded us to have a little bit more landscape area, but also, um, I think there's an opportunity there for some of the paving patterns to kind of reach across uh, both sides of the woo nerf and have some interesting, you know, interaction with the, the plaza area as it touches the building on both sides. Um, and then you can see, uh, sort of that, um, uh, change to the structure in the arbor in the terrace area. We had shown kind of a wood open trellis structure and some of the comments that we received in the last meeting was, was uh, maybe to be a little bit more interesting and there may be an opportunity there to, uh, take that arbor and make it more of a structure, uh, maybe get some double duty out of it. Um, and so on the next slide, we have some blowups of that. So the concept is that, um, we think it still wants to be a tall iconic structure, something that's set within the plaza, a place-making element that can have light integrated into it. But the idea of changing it from sort of a, a garden element with open, um, uh, open lattice on the top to something that might have a completely covered roof, uh, against, you know, sort of giving the opportunity for it to, uh, function as a shelter, uh, seems to make the most sense to us. Um, it did make sense for us to have that as an arbor element and then elsewhere in this frontage to have a smaller kind of like bus shelter element. That just seemed like there's too much, too much clutter in terms of structure. So this one, we think sort of does, um, a good job of kind of consolidating those uses. Um, and, you know, allowing this to be an element that is a focal, uh, centerpiece of that plaza. And really, that's, that's the gist of our presentation tonight in terms of the updates. So I don't know if you'd like to discuss this or if we would move on to the traffic component.
Um, I, I think while we have the, uh, traffic consultant here, it would be worth, um, at least getting a summary of, of the major points so that we can understand that.
Sure.
Great, um, for the record, Robert Michaud, a principal with MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro. Um, I do have a short slide presentation to recap some of the key points, so I'm going to do a share screen. And, um, I also need to be, be elevated to presenter.
Yeah, I'm still having some trouble, so.
I got it covered, Peter, I'm an expert now, yeah. Learning on the, learning on the fly here.
I need the tutorial.
Great, so you should see, um, first slide here.
Yes.
So what I like to do, hit the highlights, um, this is fairly straightforward, frankly. Uh, the project itself, uh, you're familiar with its location. Um, we've looked at not only the driveways and the gateway serving the site proper, but as well just to the north, the, uh, Shaw's and Spyglass Hill Drive signal, uh, as well as the Elliot Street signal. And as the board is probably aware, uh, the Mast D O T, uh, and Town are actively reconstructing Route one twenty six to a complete streets design type, um, roadway, which will include, uh, the conversion of the intersection at Shaw's and Spyglass Hill to a roundabout, one of the newer features, um, in, in design. And some signal updates a- at Elliot Street. Um, when that's complete, there'll be bike lane, Route one twenty six, integrated sidewalks, uh, very, very much a walkable roadway. And I think the design elements that Ian just had reviewed really tie in very nicely with that, uh, by providing a very walkable connection to the property, uh, in and around the property. In August of this year, we went out and, um, did traffic counts and made, uh, certain adjustments to reflect pre-go, pre-COVID conditions to those counts. Uh, all of that's documented in the study, I don't need to go into a lot of detail there. Um, and as well, we looked at travel speeds to understand, uh, from a driveway perspective, how the driveway sits relative to sightlines and safety. And we're pleased to report that the proposed locations, uh, exceed all of the minimum required elements of sightline, uh, from, from a industry standard perspective. From the site perspective, uh, there are two components that we estimate would be generating traffic, principally the residential components, but there are small office and, and other ancillary components of the program, uh, that we've taken into account in the study, which cumulatively during peak hours, uh, would represent about fifty-four to sixty-eight total vehicle trips per hour, which is a relatively modest number, frankly. Uh, so in the morning, you, you could expect about twenty outbound trips per hour during peak hours, about thirty, uh, I'm sorry, twenty entering trips, uh, during peak hours, thirty-four exiting trips, uh, over that same hour. And, um, similar trends in the evening peak hour. When we look at the distribution of those trips, most of that, of course, is oriented to or from the north. That's where the employment centers are, that's where folks are generally tending to travel during these commuter hours to or from. And, uh, we've distributed those trips, uh, to the signal at Elliot Street. And you'll see that the relative change in volumes during peak hours in this example, morning peak hour, are, are pretty modest. We're talking about increases of about one vehicle every two minutes or so, uh, through the signal. Same thing in the evening, uh, so from an impact perspective, uh, while we know DOT is in the process of updating these, these, uh, locations, there will be ample capacity at level of service, D or better operation with very little, if any, change as a result of the project. Um, I know that the site civil has already covered the point of, um, circulation as it relates to fire apparatus. We've actually done the same exercise and this is reported in the traffic report, uh, which would indicate for the largest potential responding vehicle, which is the Ashland Tower one vehicle, uh, that the access points, the circulation aisles and the woo nerf itself, that's a fun term, woo nerf, uh, all have ample dimensions to accommodate the swept path of that type of a design vehicle, uh, in various configurations, right? And that's all presented in the traffic study. So conclusions are that, um, the area intersections which are currently being reconstructed and brought up to current standards really present no safety issues, they're not high crash locations to begin with. Uh, there are adequate sightlines, modest traffic generation, uh, no real capacity impact per se. And in fact, the section of one, Route one twenty six works quite well and has for many years, will work even better when DOT is done with their work. Uh, and the site itself offers, uh, not only a highly walkable environment that integrates with that, uh, improvement, but also, uh, accommodates appropriate circulation elements. Uh, and we did have some recommendations, uh, in our study that really related to, um, pavement marking signs, making sure that the site driveway sightlines and anything planted or maintained within the sightline triangles, uh, would not impede sightline at any point, um, et cetera. And, uh, we believe that the site plan in its current form meets all of these objectives. Obviously, the, uh, DOT will, uh, will have purview over any specific geometric changes that are made at the driveways. There will be an access permit required, uh, from DOT to ensure that the driveways integrate properly to the complete streets design, right? So there'll be bike, bike lanes cro- uh, crossing the driveways, for instance. The markings that are specific to bike lanes crossing driveways will, will need to be shown to DOT to, uh, make sure that they're okay with that, uh, but we're pretty comfortable with the design as it stands, uh, with, uh, relatively low traffic impact. With that, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
All right, um, why don't we take, um, uh, traffic questions first, um, from the board? Um, if, if anyone has any. Um, I, I had one question just to, to start out with, I, I understand that kind of the ease of. Um, I, I had one question just to, to start out with. I, I understand that kind of the ease of. And I don't remember what, what's happening at this particular location with the one twenty-six. Um, road project currently in construction, but I'm wondering about the left turn out of. Out of this facility, no matter where you're coming out, the, the right turn seems fairly, fairly easy, but. There's a lot of traffic heading toward Framingham and, and, and the Pike and uh, so how does that left turn? How does that left turn happen? What's, what's in planning there um, at this particular occasion?
Right. So the, the um, the site plan shows us uh, more clearly, um, and I do, well, let's see. I don't have a copy of that readily available, but idea is that the driveways are really not high volume driveways. And there really isn't any inherent need to provide an exclusive left turn lane leaving the driveway. In fact, D O T's preference. Is to have driveways that are narrower because they're more pedestrian friendly and that goes along with the theme of. The complete streets design that they're trying to achieve on one twenty-six. The analysis that we've done would show that you have uh, no more than about twenty left turns at either driveway occurring during peak hours. Which is a very modest number, frankly. Uh, and the analysis would show that the uh, the maximum queuing on those driveways would be about a ve- one vehicle. Uh, it wouldn't be out of the question to possibly have two vehicles, but it's not a long queue, nor is it a long delay. You have the added benefit, of course, of having upstream signals that are creating gaps in traffic, uh, and you have the roundabout feature itself.
You're on, you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, so, so we're pretty comfortable that D O T would view the driveways as appropriately designed. Uh, for single mo- general purpose use for left or right turn movements without the need for those exclusive lanes.
So it'd just be, yeah, narrow, single lane and you just, you just wait your turn, wait for your opening to make that left turn.
E- exactly. Yeah, we think that's appropriate. Um, we don't want to overly design or over emphasize the need for uh, more pavement.
Is it? I guess that's the same case at the um. At uh, the facility next door, which name I cannot remember.
Yeah, Puttsen Moore or something like that.
No, the, on the other side.
Oh, oh, the kinder care?
The assisted living facility.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Right. Yeah, that's right. That's a, that's a really good example because that's also a low generating use. Um, and uh, I, I travel through here regularly and I've not ever seen that be a problem. Uh, so anecdotal is a good example.
Um, any other questions about traffic from?
Everyone, just um, looking at, it, it, I'm glad that we get to see the auto turn here. Um, I've been kind of worried that. Things are tight there and then these are small parking spots to begin with, so cars could be sticking out, especially with. With snow and, you know, a residential lot can be hard to clear. You can't just tell everybody move their car at once, so.
Right.
Um, you know, oftentimes in, in the winter, you're, you're parked right at the back of those spots. Um, and especially in some of these, I, I see some of them are compact spots that are only sixteen feet deep. Um, but on top of that, it, it kind of, as in nicely with what we just saw, the landscaping plan. Looking at this same view, all those trees on the corners in the back particularly. Hang right out into the path of this fire truck. Is, is that taken into consideration at all?
Yeah, so, yeah, as we're modeling these trucks, we actually um, account for the very specific vehicle that Ashwin owns and that would be used for the response. And that would include the bucket overhang and the extent of the bumper overhangs as well. So what you're showing, uh, what's, what's shown here in color. Uh, is the outside swept path of all of the design features of the vehicle and um, and I could probably zoom in a little bit on this just to. Give you a little better sense. Hang on, here we go. So y- you'll see that there are green track lines that, those are actually the wheel tracks. Of the vehicle and then there's a blue outer line and that outer line represents the outer swept path of the. Furthest, furthest most bumper, if you will, front or rear, uh, as well as any encroachment that the overhead aerial bucket would have. And you'll see that that blue line is entirely contained within the curved or paved surfaces of the property. Uh, there's maybe a one foot encroachment on this northerly curb uh, near the Wooner, uh, but it's. Uh, it's that encroachment's likely the bucket itself, which is at an elevation of about um. Upwards of about eight feet or so, uh, above grade, eight to ten feet. Um, so really it works quite well. Uh, we didn't see any potential impact for um. Uh, light poles uh, or other design features that are being proposed as part of the projects. So it's very neatly in, into that.
So, so maybe Ian could clarify it, but to me, it looks like it's going right through the canopy of his trees, particularly in the top left corner. The top right corner and the bottom right corner.
So.
Trees aren't showing on this plan, but, but in, in Ian's drawings, the trees show themselves with, with. The tree itself right at that height you're talking about, with for the bucket hanging out over the asphalt.
So, you, so I'm pointing at the upper page, upper left, right? Is that the area that you're concerned with? The upper left and upper right?
All the, all the corners where you come near the curb, his trees, I believe, are hanging over the curb.
Yeah, um. I, I'd be glad to take a look at the specifics of the landscape plan. Um, my understanding was that the. Um, the tree canopies uh, would essentially be contained within the. Landscape areas of the property. Um, it would be highly unusual to have trees extend much over travel lanes. Um, and to the extent they were, um, you know, there may be a need for um. Lower branch trimming uh, to ensure that there's no encroachment or an impact uh, to the canopy itself. So we'd be glad to look at that. Um, I, I, you know, so we'll coordinate with Ian and um, provide a more definitive answer for you. Yeah, we're certainly open to pulling the trees back a bit if we need to. I, I think the graphic convention for us is we show. Sort of a generic circle of where that outer canopy is. That could be at, you know, thirty feet above. Grade at that point, depending on how the tree grows, but we can certainly study that in, in greater detail to make sure there's no conflicts with those buckets and. Elevated portions of the vehicles.
But that would just be nice to see that these work together. I, I don't think they currently do.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think um, what Ian is suggesting is that while graphically his. His tree canopy is looking like it extends. Well into the travelway. Um, there is a canopy associated with the tree growth that. Uh, we want to ensure you have proper clearance in the canopy. You don't want branches or boughs of trees growing into where cars are going to be. Or, or trucks or service vehicles, or in this case, emergency vehicles are going to be traveling in that same area. I think that's a practical design feature that um, a- anyone designing a site would understand, but it's, it's, it's not as clear when we're looking at two dimensional. Uh, bird views of, of a, of a drawing. And it certainly wouldn't be the design intent to put trees in such a way that they would have any potential to impact a swept path. I, I think that's a, it's a given in the design industry, but we'll, we'll make sure that we've heard your comment and we appreciate it.
Ian, would that be a combination? Would that be either trimming branches as a tree grows? Or choosing species of trees that naturally have a longer trunk or a combination of both?
Yeah, soon, in the case of shade trees, we would specify that the lowest branch coming out of the nursery would be approximately eight feet off of finished grade. So it would be a trunk up to eight feet clear. Um, and we do that so that pedestrians can uh, walk around the trees and also so sightlines and things like that are maintained. Um, but we could also, you know, over time, those lower branches get pruned out as well to be, to, to allow an even higher canopy.
And just one more, does, is this? Only way that the tire truck get around or does it work going in the opposite direction to it? Imagine if there ever was an incident here, we'd need a lot more than one fire truck and just probably accessing from, from all directions.
I think you're on mute, Robert.
Sorry. Um, yeah, th- this would wer- work in the reverse as well. Um, thi- this represents a maximum envelope of the swept path. Uh, whether moving forward or, or in reverse. So uh, this uh, this all works. This is the, the worst case scenario. Um, this also assumes a certain travel speed of the vehicle, which is pretty conservative. This assumes about a fifteen mile an hour. Travel speed when they're attempting to make these maneuvers, which is not practically the case when you're in a site like this. Uh, so the actual swept paths are actually a bit tighter than what, what are shown here based on how fast uh. Uh, the vehicle's actually traveling. And uh, so we're, we're pretty comfortable uh, with what these swept paths are showing. And um. We'll make sure, you know, it's, it's in everyone's best interest to make sure that this, this all works well and we believe it does.
Okay, la- last one I have, just because you're the traffic guy, I'm not sure that you have anything to do with the civil design, but. If you could maybe comment on the size of the parking spaces and what a typical parking space size is. I, I think the town defines a parking space as nine by twenty. And we, we have um, eight and a half by sixteens and, and nine by sixteen, or nine by eighteen's here, I think.
Yeah, the, the standard dimension in, in most applications um, is a nine by eighteen space. There are many sites that we work on uh, where there are lower turnover spaces that can be eight and a half feet wide. Uh, it's not a preferred design dimension, but it's absolutely um, appropriate. It can, it can be used effectively. Um, the, the depth of the parking at twenty feet is, in our view, in our experience uh, excessive. It's, it's not necessary. It simply adds more paved area than is necessary for proper maneuvering of even the largest passenger. Or small trucks uh, that are on the road today. Uh, a sixteen foot dimension uh, is appropriate for. Accommodating uh, eighty-five percent of the vehicles on the road today. And uh, part of the um. Math, if you will, that needs to be done when you're looking at depth of parking has to do with how wide the aisle is. Um, if you look at the uh, dimensions of parking, which is an actual design manual that's used for, for laying out parking. Um, it'll suggest that your aisle width should be at least twenty-two feet um, for adjoining parking at, you know, ninety degree parking perpendicular. Uh, these aisle widths uh, exceed that, I believe. So um, I, I, I think. The, the dimensioning of parking here um, is consistent with what an industry practice suggests would work. And what we believe works as a practical matter through application of many similar projects in the Commonwealth. Uh, for those uh, that are so-called compact spaces, there are many more. Uh, those types of smaller vehicles that exist on the road today. Um, if you're driving a Ford F-one-fifty and may not be inclined to use uh, a shorter. Parking space like that, but there'll, there'll be ample opportunity uh, within this property to, to park your vehicle, even if it's a larger vehicle like that. Without, without incident. So we're pretty comfortable with what's shown for parking dimension.
Okay, so the left hand side where we have sixteen foot spots on each side of a twenty-two foot lane. And the envelope of the, of the fire truck right up to those uh, uh. Toyota Camry is sixteen feet long. So, you know, the, a Toyota Camry is. Hanging right to the end of that line that the fire truck has to squeak by to swig it before it gets left.
It really wouldn't, really wouldn't present that situation. Um, the, the, the travel path that I'm showing the vehicle going on for that. Uh, aisle assumes that they most likely hug one ha- one side of the aisle, but in reality, if, if a, a larger vehicle. Uh, the tower truck were traveling in this site, I'm pretty sure they'd probably tra- travel down the middle of the aisle. Um, and even if they did tend to uh, draw on one side of the aisle or the other. Uh, there really won't be substantial vehicle overhang to have to deal with. Um, the eighty-fifth percentile. Sorry for the technical term, the eighty-fifth percentile dimension uh, of a vehicle based on the uh, dimensions of parking. Uh, is about sixteen, seventeen feet total, right? It means that even the largest vehicle, F, F-one-fifty super cab. Would be a little over seventeen, I think it's seventeen feet and a, and one inch or something like that. Even for those larger vehicles. Um, they most likely won't overhang the sixteen foot dimension because they'll actually park up against the curb. So there's a vehicle overhang beyond the curb itself and the actual dimension from the park position to the rear tailgate of the vehicle. Would be less than sixteen feet. Uh, so that the, I, we don't view that to be um, an onerous situation. In fact, we think it's. More responsibly designed when you have uh, shallower parking. Uh, in, in an application like this where you're trying to save impervious area, you don't want to pave. Uh, and if we were to do an auto turn analysis of a vehicle for any one of those sixteen foot spaces. That, it would show that they are more than adequate to accommodate the swept paths and. Uh, allow two-way travel in the aisle. So it really doesn't present an issue.
Okay. I think I'm going to make note of this, Kevin, and I'm gonna, when, when this goes out to our third-party traffic review consultant. And I think we should take a finer, finer look at the uh, of the depth of, the depth and obviously the travel as well. I, 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 I can tell you, I, I've never permitted any less than an eighteen foot parking spot.
Yeah, I guess my. Boston as well. So we are suburbs, so we should not be having that. Space crunch out in suburbs. I understand just Boston Seaport. Places where you have that kind of a situation, but there's no reason to have an eight foot by sixteen feet parking in a suburb.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it would be great if it's for more impervious space, but in this case, it's for more building, you know, so.
Yeah.
That's what concerns me.
Right, and I, I didn't, uh, full disclosure, I didn't realize that these were eight foot wide spaces, so um, you know, that. From a standards perspective, um, is um, it meets the absolute minimum criteria, but um, we would certainly acknowledge that. Uh, a slightly wider space might be uh, better.
Eight and a halves, I think.
Three and a halves. Okay, eight and a half. Yeah, okay, good.
Right, and the um, we should go back and forth, you know, but while, while the drawings are up, if anyone has any additional comments or questions about. About the parking um, or traffic study. Otherwise, we can go back to um, looking at the landscape as well.
I do have a comment for, for Ian.
Okay, okay, let's um. Let's switch back. Thank you, Robert. We're going to switch back and look at um, look at the landscape.
So Ian, if you could put the, the, the side-by-side comparison of the, all the new.
Sure, this guy?
Yeah. So, uh, first of all, I, I, I think the, the, the adjustments to the, the angles of the, of, of the crosswalks and everything, I think. It looks great. Uh, it, it definitely feels natural to, to what I'm trying to do here. Uh, my comment is uh, more related to. To, to what you described on, on the structure for, for that um, landscape feature that could be a. Uh, a, a, a covered place on, on, on the patio. And if, if we can see the next image where you saw some inspirational images of. Yeah, uh, so, so I, I, I get it that you were showing this to us, us, not as a sign, but as a, as an inspirational precedent. Um, I personally, I, I think the idea of having a place with uh, the, the cupboard and with lights, it, it, I think. It, it could generate a lot of uses, which is, which is great for the residents of this property and, and, and for the town as well, especially when the food trucks come and, and, and what have you. Um, personally, I, I would, I would say that this is a, and, and I mean that I, I, I would not go. To something that becomes so baroque, like what's being shown here, or something that's a little more, a, 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 a little more elegant, more simple. Uh, but, but I wanted to get to the point that, that the, the. There's an opportunity here, I, I guess. If, if designed correctly, this, this could also be um, um. A, 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 a pretty good sized solar array that, that could help, you know, feed the, the electrical vehicle charging stations. Or, or have, have some, some uh, so- something that, that speaks to, to the sustainable features of the project. It's an opportunity that, that could be developed. And I was going to suggest um, to the board, and I don't know if, if, if Tricia, if, if you agree, thi- this could be another, one, one item that. That, that we could ask the design review to, to, to take a, a stab at and, and give us some, some recommendations. And that's it. That's all I have to say about it.
I would echo what Marcelo said. I kind of, when you first showed the slide, I really leaned towards a Linden Square. There was something very interesting about that shape and it kind of really jives well with uh, the site that we have here. Um, it feels like it would be a nice combination of trying to get the two elements of kind of that. The two elements of kind of that solid and kind of the transparency that's happening in those canopies. And if there's a way to kind of connect it versus a literally a. Bus shelter kind of feel that at least the bottom right image is starting to show. So there's definitely a play in that Linden Square canopy. And then beyond that, you also see that another rectangular kind of a canopy with lights. So maybe there's kind of that combination of the form that you could utilize that corner. And really create an entry into that walkway. It feels like you did correct the kind of the angles of the walkway in the center, but the ones of the two extreme ends stayed as they are. So maybe when you probably look at that and in connection with this canopy. Maybe that design language can be refined to one more level. So that it doesn't feel like it's an element just being thrown into the space versus kind of something really talking to that. Landscape out there, it feel like, so when you zoom out and look at this two kind of pathways, it's like, again, hitting right across on the two ends of. The Wunner versus. It definitely made such a huge difference by just shifting the angle in the center, so I think. You do need to kind of refine the ones on the two edges as well.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I, I had need to step off camera for a minute, but I was listening to your comments, Marcelo as well. And, and I agree, I think there's, there's something with all those comments about bringing these things together. I was also wondering, as in the other role, and again, this is a question because we've kind of talked about this as a. As kind of a bus shelter as well, someplace to wait. The bus does stop along here, right? I am not really actually familiar with the word, a bus can be called. But i- if, if this is also kind of serving a function as, as a bus shelter as well, which it could. That maybe that yellow structure there of, you know, gets. Shifted toward one of the paths where you would actually see the bus and then get on a path to cut through. To get to the main sidewalk, so maybe instead of being in the center. You know, maybe it's weighted to one side so that you have the, the covered area on one side and the sunny area on the other side.
Sure.
As, as, just as a thought too, as something, as something to look into, but. I agreed as well that the, going back to that more radial path kind of. Gives them that, that there's something more dynamic that kind of comes, comes back with it, so that, that's nice to see. Just looking at the notes we had from. Last time, and this maybe, maybe this is in the next round of things, but we had talked about, and it may be a question. A, a question better suited for others, but we had talked about being able to look at this, the, the whole, the project as a whole, the massing. Next to the care facility next door, or have, have kind of different views of this thing that we kind of wanted. And, and maybe those will come as we shift back to looking at the, at the building versus at the, at the site. But I wanted to, um, just to make a note that we were for those, and I think as well. To have a list of, kind of a, a, just a list of the, of the sustainable features. I think we've been talking about a lot of different things, and now it's all electric, which we're, which are, is obviously great, kind of goes along with where Ashland is heading. We have the bike racks there, so it would be, it would be good to have a kind of a descriptive list of, of all of those features that are planned. As part of this building. And as we had said for the project before, we're also talking about, a- as you go forward. On that kind of understanding at the roof lever, level, what the, where the potential is for solar. Uh, on this building as well, and that being all part of how it's relating to the. You know, just the plan Ashland has for net zero in the future.
That's certainly something we, most of our details were put into our original application, but we'll do a sort of summary list for the next meeting. And on the architecture, Matt is, was working towards. Sort of having that full presentation submitted in a week, so we could talk about it at our next meeting.
Any other questions to the, from the board before I open it up for public comment?
I wonder if Ian could maybe give us a little more detail on what the screening is on the north side of the site there. Kind of on top of a retaining wall and there's a, a taller type. Top of the parking in the same spot, and it's just if that's all gonna be able to tie in together.
Yeah, so the idea there is we would use a narrow festiget conifer, probably a, a type of arborvitae. So they grow more sort of vertical as opposed to wide, and they would be set ball to ball, so they would be. The foliage would be touching, so it would be a continuous hedgerow basically, but they take up, they don't take up a tremendous amount of. Space per plant, but when you put them in a row, you get that linear aspect to them.
Okay, and they don't have some giant root ball that'll interfere with the retaining wall?
I, I think we have enough space there for them to, to exist. You know, they will go right up to the back of the, of the retaining wall, but I don't think that'll be too much of a problem.
Okay.
All right, at this time, why don't we open it up for. Public comment, and again, Peter, if you don't mind, have you managed that process?
Nope, I haven't too. So if anybody from the public wants to step forward and, and offer any comments, please do, raise your hand. Going once, twice. Trish, uh, Jared, I, I, I see no hands at this point, so. I think we can move forward.
So the next step on this would be to, obviously, we're looking both for full civil and to be looking at the. The facades in, in greater detail, either one of those could come first, Peter, or?
Uh, yes, a little bit of both, I think, I think there's about three, I think just three problems that we need to attack on this one. Number one, the applicant did submit updated civil and engineering packets. Uh, and, and Ben and Steve, please chime in, uh, you know, I assume you think they're comfortable with me sending this plan as it stands to. Third-party review, or do you want to. Take a little bit more time to, to tighten up a couple of things?
No, we think it's ready for third-party review, so I'd like it, I'd like to see it go, especially if traffic is going out as well.
Yeah, so the, the, the second thing that I'm gonna say is traffic, and obviously. We, we had their original plan reviewed and, and I will reconnect with traffic engineer. Uh, excuse me, our, our traffic review engineer, and I will start that process as well. Uh, and then obviously the third thing is, is the architecture of the building, which Mr. Marada is, is the. So, with those three things, I think we can, you know, move forward, uh, you know, move forward. I doubt that. You know, if we continue this to the next meeting on the twenty-sixth, that our third-party review will be back in time. And, and, and so I, I just do want to make a caveat for that situation to arise, but. If, 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 if the architecture is something we want to talk about next meeting, I think that's probably the best, uh, the best topic to focus on.
We would like that, if we could, um, we'll, we'll have Ian expand on the, the bus stop. And we'll prepare the sustainable features list and, and then do talk about architecture at the next meeting, that would be great.
So at this point then, that would really be looking at, um, with a, an extra sensitivity to how all of this. Site development that we've been talking about, how it now relates to the new, the revised building facade in, in the next round of things. Any further comment by the board or anything you want to add in, requests? I, I would ask at, at that time, actually, if we're, since we're gonna be looking at the facade, to do revisit, looking at. Looking at this building in context, particularly with the, um, with the care facility next door. And, um, and revised site section as well. From, um, or maybe site section, I can't remember what we've seen. You know, through one-twenty-six and up through the, up through the condo development as well.
Sure, yeah, I would, so I agree, some of my dreams would be.
All right, if that sounds, if that sounds good, any other comments? Then I will make a motion that we continue the five oh one Pond Street special permit and site plan review. Um, we are continuing that to May twenty-sixth as well, is that right, Peter?
That is correct, and I just wanted to make sure that Ben and Matt, we have an agreement that we're gonna continue this until the twenty-sixth, and we're in, 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 in lockstep. Um, and, and, uh, and on that, if I could get an email, just a request that continues, I'd really appreciate that, so I can file that counter. Uh, regarding the tolling period, but yes, to give the twenty-sixth, and this would be our, um, our second hearing of the night. Uh, with five oh one Pond, um, and then we're also gonna hear a new application next week. But I can talk, I'll talk about that after that.
I'll, I'll come to motion, Tricia.
All right, and a roll call vote.
Lakshmi, Trisha, and I.
Keep having a good day.
Marcelo, one, I.
And McClain, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I, so that is five zero zero, and we will see you on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Okay, Peter, if I can ask you to give Anna a text?
Yeah, and Peter, I can not see the minutes come through.
You know, I, I checked with Emma, the minutes are still, we're still working on the minutes, I'm sorry for everyone.
Was there one set that went through, or?
You know what, I texted Emma during our break and, and she said, we haven't, there, there was still that, we're, we're still waiting. Uh, we're still just putting everything together, so at the next meeting, we'll get those.
That's fine, but I am not teary over not doing meeting minutes, we will, oh, Lakshmi is just trying to avoid it because this is her last meeting. I see your plan.
She wants to second something, I think. Well, the Bruins won tonight, everyone, five to two, if anybody else was looking, so.
Welcome back, Anna, we have just realized that Lakshmi has, um, uh, somehow gotten out of. Four round of meeting minutes because this is her last meeting, I think it was intentional, but, um. But we'll, we'll muddle through meeting minutes next time without her, so. All right, so then we will, we're on to administrative matters. So I guess we'll start at the top of the list with applications received.
Uh, so just the one, that's one, one quick note, so next week, we, I mean, excuse me, the next meeting will have three public hearings. Obviously, Village America's five oh one Pond, uh, and then we're gonna hear a new application from Mazzy. Uh, the restaurant, I think I believe like a couple of months ago, maybe a month ago, and talked to everybody about this. Um, they did file a special perm, uh, they filed for a outdoor seating. Since that time, since they filed, the governor Baker has actually issued another year-long extension for outdoor seating. And so what they are currently doing right now is within the governor's orders. Uh, however, Mazzy would like to keep a tent up for about three years. And so we are not looking to make a permanent, uh, a permanent. Decision regarding the length of, 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 of a process such as we did with TJ's, however. Uh, Mazzy's, as construction continues on Pond Street, they have found this tent in the front of the building to be extremely useful. Uh, for dining and or for renting, uh, or indoor housing events. Uh, and so the two owners are gonna come and, uh, present their application to the board. But within that application packet, which we'll send out, um, and I believe it's actually up online. They are looking to have a three-year permit, uh, which would kind of bring them through the end of construction on Pond Street. Uh, and then they would have be able to kind of. Recalculate, you know, what they, you know, recalculate outdoor seating, is it still going to be a need three years from now? Would they want to invest in a more permanent solution for outdoor seating? But I think at this point, uh, as a young business in Ashland dealing with COVID. Um, they are looking for not a, uh, a, I, I don't wanna call it a temporary, but a. A permit that would obviously, uh, end indoor close at the three-year. So, um, just want to make note of that, um, as that permit, uh, is presented, indoor application is presented. Uh, in front of the planning board. Just to make note, I am working with DPW on a couple, uh, tree removals along scenic ways. Uh, so that will be coming in in the next couple, I would probably say, months. Um, we're just gonna line, I'm starting to work with DPW to line up some stuff and some tree removal. Uh, of some, some trees that are not in the best of shape. For the summer months, uh, waiting till the, to the, to the budget gets restocked, so it'll come July first. That's all I have for, uh, that, uh, application, if you see.
Okay, uh, be on the list, future retreat date, this might be something that is. Next week or in two weeks?
In two weeks, I can outline this, uh, would everybody like me just to send out an email? Does a, my biggest question is, what works best for everybody? Is it an email, do you want to do a doodle poll? Uh, how do you want, how, how does everyone feel about, uh, putting this together?
I think a doodle poll is fine, I think that's what we've done traditionally, so let's do that.
Traditionally, we have done that, but I just kinda want to, okay.
Yeah, I, I know Wednesday evenings tend to be best for you, Peter, so, you know, maybe we'll be able to, to find something, you know, out there.
And speaking of trees, you had mentioned some trees coming down. I have a recollection from about a year ago when I started on the board, we had the scenic route tree situation. And of replanting that we were gonna be doing this spring, if I recall, what's the status of that now that we're in May?
I will follow up with DPW in, in, in the DPW votes. So, but we can look into, I'll look into that, Anna. And, and I'll, I'll be, I can explain it. But that was long winter, but that's a very good memory.
It's been a year. It was literally right around this time, maybe within a few weeks.
It was, I think it was. The second thing on the, uh, number C is the downtown zoning informational discussion. I am going to probably send them another doodle poll for this one. There are a couple of forums coming up, uh, I believe on ten fifty Main Street. So there's, there's obviously, I want to give everyone respect of night meetings during the week and obviously planning board meetings. Um, so I'm gonna look at that, uh, those are been, the, the, any of the ten fifty Main Street has been, uh, really, um. I'm gonna say champion indoor organized through the town manager's office, so. Uh, just, I just want to make note that, that is still on my radar. Uh, I am starting, you know, I am working towards putting that presentation together. Uh, but I just want to respect everyone's time and efforts concerning that property. Uh, but also in the relationship to night meetings and everything that else is going on, but, uh, that is on my list. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I thought we were, had brainstormed doing our retreat and the downtown zoning thing maybe in a related fashion. Is that something vaguely familiar to anybody?
I'm sorry, say that again, Anna?
The, the downtown zoning info session, if I understand. Might happen in connection with our retreat, is that right?
I think we were going to have that, that, that was really something more for the public to understand general zoning in the downtown and specifically. Around the ten to fifty Main Street site. As Peter mentioned, we had one final ten to fifty Main Street kind of summary meeting, the, um. The, the, that ten to fifty Main Street group with which Deepa was a part of as well. And at the end of that meeting, we talked about, um, wanting to, still promoting a public. A public input of of that project in a design charrette kind of way. Um, so I have actually been working with um um the town manager to. To set up a couple forums, which are not about any of the boards in town, they're not about select board or planning board or anybody else. It's really for the public to to participate in in a design. Um, a design discussion, design charrette, for lack of a better word, about about those projects before. They make any further steps forward toward applying to planning board or or something like that, so those. Um, yeah, to to buy that kind of open opportunity. So a part of that was to get an outside mediator um to to kind of lead and guide that discussion. So um I'm I'm really happy that that's actually uh seems to have come together and that there'll be two dates. Um, two different dates for for those uh forums for public input. That's just, that's just happened like today, so um.
There's a lot happened. I wanna respect everyone's time and effort, so uh but I that. I put this on the agenda just to make sure that everyone knew it was on my radar, it should be on the planning board's radar. Um, but but thank, but thank you, Trish, for updating us on that. Uh, can I keep on going?
Uh, unless anyone has any questions about that.
I mean, I I just to clarify, so we're not doing an info session or we are, what's the?
Those are two separate things, so I think the info, the info session is about zoning.
Yep.
And is relating, related to the planning department. And these other things are about design and unrelated to zoning.
Understood, so we're gonna be doing both.
Correct, and in my eyes, the zoning was gonna take place by a Zoom, the public, as a public Zoom meeting. While our retreat is obviously in person.
Okay, and then there's also the third thing, which is this mediation thing.
Right.
Okay.
Also be by Zoom, so.
Okay.
Uh, the next thing is, I sent out everyone an email about a upcoming training on master plans. Uh, if everyone was able to receive that, that was the CTPS, which is the Citizens Training Planning uh Club. And uh that is going to take place via Zoom uh on Monday, May twenty-sixth at uh six P M. So if anybody wanted to sign up for it and were interested, please do. The planning office, uh I'm happy to um reimburse anybody the cost. I know a few members have taken the the trainings, I know I have, I find them to be deeply, uh I feel like they're to be great. I know Ralph Wilmer, who is going to be presenting on the twenty-third. I worked with him firsthand on two master plans, uh and on past two communities, and so Ralph is um. Is a great resource, you know, he's a, you know, he's got, you know, decades of experience in planning in Massachusetts. Uh, and so if anybody's able to attend, I and were interested, please let me know, I can try to sign you, you can sign up, we'll reimburse you. Uh, whatever it takes, but I just want to highlight that there was a training session going on on master planning. Which leads me to point number, uh point E, the update on the mass comprehensive plan letter. Uh, this letter that was uh adopted in the vote and I'd say adopted by the planning board has been sent to the select board office. Um, and I believe the select board, uh they are planning to put it on an upcoming agenda. Uh, and once they do so, and once I know that's gonna happen, obviously, I'll alert planning board members. Uh, and I can at least tell you what time it is going to happen, if anybody is uh free and able to jump on that meeting as planning board members. Uh, I am happy to post a planning board meeting, so we could obviously have more than a quorum. Uh, arrive and or participate in any discussion.
Yeah.
Trish, do you wanna add anything?
Yeah, um I was in touch um first with Michael and then with Joe Mignani, who's the chair of the select board about this. And he was planning on putting it on his next agenda item for uh on their next agenda for discussion by the. Select board, at that time, he, assuming the select board is in degree agreement. They would be looking for a a time when the planning board could join the select board. Meeting at one of their upcoming meetings uh to set aside some time to discuss the the comprehensive. Um, plan specifically, so Joe was wanting um just some feedback if um. You know, you know, I guess, looking ahead to, again, Wednesdays, if the majority of the planning board. Could likely set a ti- side time on a Wednesday to attend part of their meeting, or is Wednesday just out for for some of our board? Or um any feedback, any feedback that I could give him?
I mean, I'm certainly, I I would make myself available and um I think if the majority of our board is available, we should post a meeting and make it happen.
I should be available in general.
Okay.
One of this.
Yeah, it would be helpful is to see how these, all these events that we're talking about is going to pan out. I don't know if I'm wanna have every Wednesday night locked in for planning board. Uh, event for our next one month, but maybe it may be helpful to see the dates and the spread of it.
Okay, yeah.
This would be, yeah, this would be one Wednesday, right, just just to join them for the for that conversation and that's it.
That's right, and and not to not to sit through a full select board meeting, but a a specific length of time where we could just talk about. Where we are and what's the next step?
Just great, that's moving forward.
So, okay.
Okay, and and Deepa, just in reaction, I'll try to put a memo together outlining dates just for everyone's uh sanity.
I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like three of us, Marcelo, myself, and Trisha can be available, and Deepa might, and Kevin. Uh, perhaps he will as well, so it sounds overall like the majority um would be there and we should just post.
Yeah, yeah, it typically this like one meet just uh the the first and third Wednesday of every month. Just know.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and we may wanna add it, I don't know if that, if the first meeting, it sounds like. Select board is inviting us to be at the first meeting in case there's questions and then do maybe a second discussion separately.
I think the first me, I think that, and I can clarify this with Joe, but my understanding was the first meeting where he is, it's going to be on the agenda. That would really, that that was gonna be a discussion with the select board about the letter that they have received. Um, and then um he was, he can't speak for the select board, obviously, but he was um. Optimistic that the that the board would want to then have a joint, some kind of joint discussion with us for the discussion.
It sounds, it sounds like the first one, it's less important for all of us to be there or for the majority, and the second one is more important. Um, and maybe what we can do is after we get some input from select board from their first meeting, we may wanna put it on our agenda. And brainstorm if we wanna make a presentation as a board to them, um or have, you know, have some kind of. Uh, more organized, if you will, communication, so that it's a good use of their time and ours.
Right, yeah, no, that makes sense to keep a a a focused discussion as as obviously all of our times, theirs and ours is limited, so. Okay, so that's that's where that is.
And the next one I have on the agenda, and I just put it on, uh believe. Uh, this is something from Kevin, Kevin, you put this one on. Uh, and I think it was more of a just as a follow-up bullet point from our last meeting with the designer view committee. Was to to continue the discussion for application review uh and design review committee communication. Uh, so, does anybody wanna add to our past discussion on that, or I know it's ten thirty at night, do you want me to? Kind of move that out to a retreat date, but it's up to everybody.
I I think we've kinda hit on it a little bit in the middle of the meeting today, where we decided we should give them a bolded list of. Here's what we'd like to look, likely specifically to look at and just to to set set goals for them. So that we're not both separately talking to the developers about the same thing, um so giving them a scope of what to review and then. If, I don't know, finding some sort of format where they report back, if they either come on for the first five minutes of of one of our meetings and and report on. Findings or what, but or if it's just an email, whatever it is, but.
No, I think I think this this is gonna be a good test case, just to establish a prot- protocol. And we send them a defined scope, they send us a defined um report with recommendations, let's let's see how it works.
It's almost like there are peer review, if you will, my preference would be that they provide short answers in writing, and then one of their members presents. In a presentation, so we can ask questions and obviously the the whole design review committee could show up and fill us in. As things pop up.
Yeah, I mean, I think typically in the, well, the the few times this has happened in the past in the my time here. Um, it has been not just in an email, but in more of a, more of a formal report. Um, whi- which was nice to have separate from email, obviously.
Yeah, I I I would, I I would um kind of bold in that direction, let's let's formalize communication. So that we don't get in in the way like, oh, we wouldn't, this happened, or I I meant this, or I meant that. I think a report, a formal report, maybe they 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 can define how their reports should look like, let's see what it is. And I have them choose how they want to present it, um and 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 the goal is to try to make these meetings efficient. Um, and so the most efficient we can make the communication, the important thing is for that they, not not too much to expand. The meeting, but to make sure that they have the time and the input, which is what we're looking for.
Right.
That ahead of time will also give the team, design team, to come up with responses. When they come and present to us, so that um they don't come here and listen to it and then have a difference of opinion. Which is just not gonna help, so having it written ahead of time and comes with part of the agenda package. So that gives the design team enough time as well as if design review board wants to come in and add to it. Yeah, that works.
They had been kind of, design review had been concerned about getting us their meeting minutes and how it takes them a while to write them and then review them, so. It it would be, I I I would hope this would be something separate from their full meeting minutes and just a specific report that comes to us and to.
This is the opportunity for them to figure out how 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 to do this.
Yeah, and with a bullet point list, at least in this, at least in this test case, um that should be easy, like how respond to this, this, this. You know, and what and whatever extra issues that that they might, um the extra information they might wanna provide to us as well.
Only thing I I would suggest is a deadline, I think we need to be very precise that we need it by date certain, so that we actually have it for our meeting.
Yeah, that that's, that's a good note, too, if we don't have it in time, we can't use it, so.
Exactly, no, that that makes sense, I think there's nothing, nothing to to focus the the everybody's minds, to be specific. And what we're asking and for them to be specific on how they reply.
Um, meanwhile, on a related topic, I did um. Uh, revise, restructure, re- reform that, um the documents, um Kathy Rooney had given us. About the potential suggested changes in zoning for, um not in zoning, in the bylaws. For Fall Town meeting, and I sent that back to Kathy, um but I haven't received a response back if. I I'm happy to to give it to Peter, he can forward it to the board, it was just, like I said, kind of my restructuring. Um, and um but but I don't have any response um.
I think that would be a good thing to include on our, our retreat as an agenda item to review that together. Um, or and any response received.
Okay.
And I I think it'd be really great to encourage design review to provide a response pre-retreat. So that we can review that carefully.
Sounds good.
And with my coming up next meeting, we should have the recommendations for their outdoor seating. One thing that keeps in my head is like all these temporary organization of having outdoor seating. What is it, what is it really doing to that stormwater runoff, like has the pattern changed? Because I guess when you're kind of looking at these outdoor seating, we're not looking at stormwater and going back to that kind of that check, right? The site has gone through, undergone changes because of all these additional seating and the traffic movement has changed. I'm really curious, like, has there been cases where people are going back and doing this stormwater runoff check? Um, and I I'd be curious to see what the design review board has come up with before our next outdoor seating. Topic that's coming up on May twenty-sixth, is that right? Looks like they're working on something, so I I'd be curious to see what they've come up with.
That's that's a good idea, when I heard the three-year request, that gave me some pause. Um, and um I think that would be a good idea to get their feedback sooner than later to that as well.
Good.
Um, I assume you can, you'll be coordinating that with um with Emma, Peter, about getting feedback from the design review committee for. From these various things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the last.
Oh, go ahead, you're doing the list.
No, I was gonna say the last thing is inclusion of zoning bylaw, obviously, uh just wanna keep that on everyone's radar that. Uh, the if the community decides to continue moving forward, uh I know um. Hopefully, you know, my goal and or the community's goal would be to move that forward and go have a planning board take another. Uh, have a deeper conversation and review of that bylaw, uh and so I just kinda want to make note of that. Um, and uh yeah, I I can move that to an agenda item under retreat when we make that. Uh, but I just kinda want to get the planning board's take on how uh will be the best way to review uh the latest. Uh, bylaw, if we uh regarding the future.
Kevin, this was a another one of your suggestions for the agenda today, um what was your?
Yeah, I just, I I think it's a, an in-depth discussion, it's gonna take some time, so just thinking ahead about. Where we might be able to set aside time to to work on it, not at ten thirty at night in half-hour chunks, but maybe.
Thank you.
Do an hour of it, you know?
And one one thing we could do today is briefly talk about process, right, so there's like the substance of it, which could take hours and would be a good retreat topic. On its own, and then there's the kind of procedural options, whi- which is like we could, we could piggyback again and request. For another multi-board discussion, right, and figure out the status of that, that's one option. Um, another option is that we as a board could do some of our own legwork, either kind of create a, almost like a volunteer subcommittee. Of our board that does some research and brings it, brings it to the next meeting. Um, and then that could lead to further cross-board discussions, so that we take some initiative as the board. Um, to gather some of our feedback, right, or we wait till to a retreat and. You know, I think I think there is a benefit to brainstorming some of our options as a board, as to how we wanna contribute, what our capacity is. Um, what kind of initiative we're willing to take to help out in the effort. Um, and those are some of the ideas I had, just to kind of think about, I don't know if there's others that we need to consider.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's kind of maybe, maybe the gist of it is, um because I I believe. The committee is gonna go forward, I'm on the committee, obviously, and um. And but it might be an opportunity to expand that committee, it committee as well, to, you know, maybe there's more, more voices that could be on on that committee as well. Um, but if we could understand, if that committee could understand. Um, a timeline that the planning board would be comfortable with, again, backtracking kind of from Fall Town meeting. Um, to hit certain points about where where we wanna be, then um that would help, help as well to make sure. You know, we're getting all the ducks in a row. But whether we, yeah, wanna put that on for our next, for for the retreat as well to get that, we're gonna probably be loading up our retreat. So it might be about carving out a little time earlier in a meeting. I'm I'm tempted to take one of these meetings coming up this spring and just not schedule things for it, not not schedule so many things, but to schedule. These other discussions and not allow public hearings to kind of, they're all gonna have to take a little break, you know? So that we can focus on some other things, uh not at ten thirty, so.
Trish, I'm very curious, I wonder, I don't know if it's a retreat thing, but it feels like. Like we've started to talk to the design review board, it feels like we should have a little more connection with the sustainability committee. And kind of look at it on the larger picture. And kind of look at it on the larger picture, what this town is going towards, because I feel like we're not talking, right? And we're not looking at what that goals are for the town and from the sustainability point of view. So I want, like, if it's like a multi-board, I don't know, I'm afraid to call it a retreat, I don't think we wanna spend a whole day. But it feels like sustainability and historic commission, maybe we all should kind of have like a one-hour or an hour session together to kind of talk about goals for the town in the long term, right? Like, uh, sustainability and we're not talking at all.
The beauty, I think the beauty deep of what you're saying is it, it's totally on, on, on par with the comprehensive plan concept, right?
Yeah.
Because part of, part of the comprehensive plan discussion is not just to get the select board support, but then for us to start to do that work, that partnering work about planning, which is exactly what you're identifying, long-term planning. Um, I have failed to provide the board with updates because I have been attending the net zero discussions with the sustainability committee and I've done, I don't think I've done any formal updates. Um, and I will try for the next meeting to provide an update. I mean, the only thing I'll say is whatever work I did to contribute was part of their presentation of town meeting. So if you were a town meeting, you got the update. And I think Marcelo was in some of those meetings as well. Um, but I'll try to do better as far as updating the board more. Um, I think the next discussion is coming up next week with that particular group. Um, but, but Deepest's point is spot on that it's time for us to not only get support of the select board for comprehensive planning, but take some initiative to initiate those discussions with other boards. Kind of what is the long-term plan for planning and how do we all connect together?
I guess what led me to think about this is like when, when you're presenting and seeing EV spots. We're not defining those number of EV spots at this point, like everybody out here now has an electric car. For a hundred apartments, two hundred apartments, there's no definition right now, so I guess these buildings that we're all talking about on our planning board is gonna be there for next fifty years, so it's high time we talk about it and start to put some language into our, um, discipline to make sure that people start to follow it.
Yeah, and the net zero meetings I've been going to, we've reviewed numerous bylaw possibilities that all relate to net zero, that are massive potential shifts to our bylaws as a town, that covers all of that. Anything from how you build to electric vehicles, to transportation, to complete streets. It's essentially, it's almost like a fabric of comprehensive planning, just what they're trying to accomplish with net zero would rewrite our entire bylaws. Um, so you're absolutely right, all of these things are so interconnected, right? And a good comprehensive plan will connect those dots so that all of these different elements of our community that are each caring about their island, if you will, will start to function together.
I guess maybe it might be nice if just talking, you're gonna about bullet points, if the sustainability committee can um, provide almost like a checklist or a bullet point list of things that they would like as project, you know. It's, it's kind of like Matt's, um, letter, you know, outlined a lot of those points. But it would at least be a starting point when we came up with a project about what the sustainability committee would be, would be looking for. Or, um, just keeping in mind as we say how our Wednesdays are booking up. You know, our schedule in, in our planning board meetings isn't gonna get lighter. And so trying to carve out all this time is.
I, we have to get it organized, I mean, we cannot make it a full-time job because.
Yeah.
Time for it.
Yeah, so, um, but they probably know a lot of those answers already, or at least a good starting point, at least a place for us to start. So.
I guess what I'm suggesting is because we're limited in our capacity, the comprehensive plan process could be that natural organization mechanism that allows for those discussions, right? Because if we want to undertake a comprehensive plan, it's just natural, it's a natural schedule and calendar to make all those discussions happen.
Yeah, absolutely. When, when, when we get to that point, then, yeah. Um, so kind of intermediate, intermediate step before that process even gets rolling, I guess. You know, a, a bullet point list, comprehensive plan discussions.
Um, yep. One of the things I had suggested to the net zero group was that we need a checklist for our projects, as a suggested checklist from them as to things we should be looking for, right? Um, and, um, so that was discussed very, very briefly. Um, and the, the work right now is to basically prioritize all these wonderful net zero ideas to get us moving there as a community. Need to be prioritized as far as like, do we wanna accomplish these things within a year, three years, five years and so forth?
Yeah.
Um, and, um, and then that would be delivered, those recommendations would be delivered to the select board by the sustainability committee and to other boards, obviously. Um, and if that moves forward, it would involve all kinds of planning and potentially rewriting and consultants and all that. Um, again, that can be a massive piece of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's all it's gonna feed back in. So, okay. Item H, return to in-person meetings, is this a definitive date, Peter?
This is right now the date that the order of the legislature expired. And so I want, I, I, I didn't mean to sneak it in, to be sneaky, to put it at the bottom, but, uh, if nothing happens at the legislative level, uh, we would be returning to in-person meetings um, as of July fifteenth.
And that's with no hybrid possibility?
I, I still have to look into that. I, I do not know, Anna. I know, uh, the select board has adopted some new procedures, uh, regarding who can be in the room regarding the quorum, a quorum has to be in, obviously with voting, uh, to open up the meeting, obviously there can be, uh, external participants. Uh, and so we are, I'll, I'll continue to work a, a, as new kind of comes over the wire about this. But I just kinda wanted to put it really on everyone's radar, that July fifteenth, the legislative comes up. I would not be surprised if it gets extended out another six months or so. Uh, but that's kind of, like I said, just trying to put it, uh, just, just try to run everyone's radar that this could be uh, a change, uh, that has obviously been two years in the making. So, I think it's only my Tricia or myself that remember planning board meetings in person. So, uh.
Yeah.
They're, they're fun, we'll return it.
Um, does anyone have anything else they wanna add to this? Because we have no meeting minutes right, right now.
No, Emma and I are still working on finalizing those and getting those out and obviously touching some things up.
I think everyone's fine with that. Um, uh, any, anything else that anyone wanted to discuss at the end of our list here? Okay, then I will just make, I just wanted to thank Lakshmi for
Yes.
her time on the planning board. She is, though she has no memory of sitting in the, the room.
I have not. I came in COVID, I'm leaving during COVID, two years.
Exactly, but she does have, um, the most seniority after myself. And I really appreciate Lakshmi, you agreeing to stay on this first half of the year when we have these big projects coming up and intense discussions about a lot of things. Obviously, there's been some really long meetings and I appreciate that you, uh, that you decided to, um, that you agreed to stick with it for that amount of time, so thank you for that.
I would just wanna thank everybody, um, I had a great time being part of the planning board, um. I, uh, feel like I learned a lot, um, I still have a lot more to learn. Hopefully I'll get to do this in Texas, but, um, it's gonna take some time, I think, first off. Um, and, uh, I feel like the planning board is now very strong, uh, and uh, Kevin and Marcelo, a good luck on the election, uh, hopefully, uh, I don't know who's going on Ted, I'm contested, I'm contested, so, um, hope, uh, both of you get to stay on and keep the planning board strong. Um, I'm sad to leave Ashland, but, um, if you're visiting Houston, do call me and, uh, visit me, um. Um, that's it. Thank you, thank you for having me on the board.
Good luck, Lakshmi.
Oh.
Thank you, Lakshmi. Good luck. You ready to move? Or it looks like you're still enjoying Ashland, doesn't look like.
No, the house is going in the market next week, so we are scheduled to move on June fourteenth. Yeah. Oh, Peter, you, um, I was the representative in the M W R C. So somebody from the board needs to be part of the, but Yolanda is already representing as Ashland, so I don't know. She does most of the talking for Ashland.
Yeah, no, we'll work, we'll work on that.
She's the chairs, she's the chair.
Chair. Myself and Emma have been attending those as well, but we'll work on that and obviously it's been great to get to know you the last two years. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, I had a great time, yeah, thanks. I'm gonna miss all of you. I'm not gonna miss coming on Thursday for meetings.
You can always pop on, just to, you know, be in the audience, so. All right, on, on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
And a roll call vote, starting with you, Lakshmi.
Um, Lakshmi Christian, I.
Boink, good eye.
Anna Tassmaniskey, I.
Marcelo, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I.
Bye, everyone.
Weekend, everybody, enjoy the weather.
Hi.